Totally my fault because I left, I got it done so late. Then I left work and it was there. I used to have a laptop that used to go everywhere. We didn't work though.
Yes, and um, I had some trouble printing it out, but I sent it to the um, the woman that's in charge of everything and she said, "No worries, we'll find a way." She printed it out and it's fine, so I should find out. Someone said by end of December, so that's soon.
Very soon?
Yeah, but someone else sent me this first couple of weeks ago. Either way, I'm not too sure.
Okay, so you let me know?
Yes, I will.
Alright, good, I want to know.
I got this in the mail, did you? I will never use it, but I thought you might still be manual.
I am manual, but I won't use it. You know why?
Why, it doesn't fit in your pocket?
No. I'll tell you why. I get a lot of one in my stocking every Christmas.
I can't beat that.
Looks like you're trying to sell a Bible over here.
But thank you anyways, Jeff. You know, one of these days I'm going to have to cave in.
Forgot to plug in my computer. Think there's a spot to plug it in down below? Or they all use?
I think there's one more.
Ready for break?
Oh, yes, very ready.
Jackson, so I drove Jackson off with the bus. And as a bus driver, I keep playing for the past like four years.
Failure on court.
How many days? She's like, "Two." She was all excited.
I cannot wait.
Yeah?
Oh, good, you're steady.
I am, I am.
What a good newbie there. Hey Chris, I promise to make you proud today.
Hi. The John Flecked my present.
Having issues?
And then you walk around, well actually I just walked that way.
The one with the, with the orange thing in, alright? You found her, right? You found it?
Oh, okay.
Way over there.
Hey, you want to do something because you're much younger than this.
Yeah, there's two there, two.
I think. Far right, my right.
I'll send an email, let you know.
I know, oh, yeah, tomorrow, yeah, tomorrow I'll, I'll uh...
You're the man. Thank you very much.
I wish that, I wish I would know after tomorrow what the deal is, but I'm not going to know until last Monday. So, anyways.
Congratulations.
Last night.
Christian, we ready? Christian, we ready?
Ready.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It pleases me to see so many folks here this evening. This is the regular scheduled meeting of the Wareham School Committee. It's December 17th, and we want to welcome you all. At this particular point in time, I would like to welcome anyone that would like to address the school committee and the public participation. I ask you to come forward, speak into the mic, identify yourself, and, and let us know what your issues are. Is anyone like to address the committee at this time? Of course, I know who you are, but if you'll identify yourself.
Good evening, my name is Kevin Bujali, parent, taxpayer, and basketball coach at Wareham High School. And I know that the issue of athletic eligibility and academic standards might come up later tonight, so I would like to speak to that issue briefly, if I may. I know that there are reasonable people that can differ on this, what the solution is here. And I think there's thoughtful people who can disagree. I think there's two views. I was reading an article today by a reporter out in Western Mass who was covering a very similar issue in another town in Western Mass. And he said there were two questions that that school district was asking themselves. First question was, are our standards making a poor statement about the priorities of an academic system? And maybe underselling the potential of the kids it's serving, which is one view. Another view is, by keeping kids in school through reasonable means, are systems recognizing the greater good in showing wisdom and patience, especially with students from disadvantaged backgrounds who need a chance? So that was the other view. I tend to agree with that latter view right here. At Wareham High School, where we know students must pass six of eight classes right now, that's the second toughest academic standards in the South Coast Conference. And, but more than that, I'm more worried about the students without the interested support of parents, the ones that keep those kids squared away. And I see that type of student unfortunately a great deal. I'm worried about raising standards without creating supports in school and after school to support these students. I know that in my 30 years of coaching at Wareham, there have been students who would not have made it through high school if it hadn't been for their participation in athletics, in my case, in basketball. What happens to those types of kids? I also know of successful students in college who received an F in a quarter in high school for a variety of reasons. Kids make mistakes, kids struggle in certain disciplines, and I'm really not a fan of zero tolerance policies. I think sometimes the easiest thing in the world is to kind of wash our hands, cut bait, say goodbye, we have a hard standard, and sorry, tough luck kid. I think it takes creativity to work with students, to guide them, to mold them, to motivate them, and to get them back on track. And as educators, that's our job, to get kids back on track, to get kids that maybe haven't made the best decision sometimes, to, to learn from their mistakes. I ask the committee to take some of these observations into consideration as you discuss the eligibility policy later this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach Bujali. Anyone else that would like to address the school committee at this time? Seeing no one, we'll move along. Good news, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you. I would like to introduce our STEAM committee as good news tonight, and we will wait until number four in the agenda.
That's, that's my good news.
That's your good news?
That's my good news.
So you're going to wait till number four?
I am.
Alright. Uh, anyone else on the committee have good news at this time? Wow.
Basketball, do you?
Well, yeah, that's, that's really good news. And we've got the coach here. We won our opener, is that right, Coach Bujali? We won our opener, that's good news, right? Alright, sounds good. Uh, any other good news? Moving along, minutes of the meeting of December 3rd. Any omissions, deletions, or want to take a motion? I'll entertain a motion to accept as presented?
No moves.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero up.
Stay in.
Four zero one. And now we go to number four.
Do.
STEAM Academy.
You can...
That's it.
Hello.
Hello.
Hello. My name is Josh, is Joshua Flaherty, and I would like to welcome the Wareham STEAM Academy. Well, me and my peers are representing 86 students. Thank you.
Thank you, Josh.
Please, you guys are the most prepared of any of the presenters that we have here, so no worries.
We have to buy better tape.
We're going to design it.
There you go.
Hi, my name is Erin James. I'm a student, 7th grade, for the STEAM Academy. This year we got a grant from AD Makepeace which went towards our new 3D printer. We use the printer to print, create objects like these. To do so, we have to open a website called Thingiverse and customize an object. After we customize an object, we put it on a flash drive connected to the printer, and it prints. Here are some objects that were made in the printer.
Wow.
Wow, it's great.
This came out of a printer?
Can you make a tennis ball?
Isn't that cool?
Yeah, I don't know if it'd bounce, but...
Make a tennis player. Excellent. A star is born.
Hi, I'm Jason Klempp, and I'm a 7th grade STEAM Academy student. Since the beginning of the year, the STEAM Academy students have been working on a project. The objective of this project is to create a product that is sustainable. In science, we studied sustainable power sources. In humanities, we created a logo and a company name for our product. We brought some examples of the logos.
Hello, I'm Nico Lembovolpe. I'm a STEAM Academy student. I'll be talking about the field trips that we go on in the STEAM Academy. In the STEAM Academy, we've gone on two field trips so far. We've gone to Camp Linden and also to AD Makepeace. And at each field trip, we don't just have recreational field trips, they tie into each class. Especially at AD Makepeace, where we witnessed a cranberry harvest. And it ties into our humanities class. We've been making these sustainability booklets. And that's another way that STEAM is slightly different than 7th grade. ELA, social studies, and visual arts are combined into one class called Humanities. We don't just have ELA. So at AD Makepeace, we learned how cranberries are harvested, processed, and delivered to customers. And also Camp Linden, which was the first field trip, we did trust exercises, including a ropes course and jumping off of a telephone pole with a harness, of course. So this might not be a class, but it was also fun. And I have examples of the sustainability booklets that we did in humanities.
Great.
What's his last name?
Thank you.
Alright. Is it good?
We're very interested in the work.
Hi, my name's Amanda DeCruz, and I'm a STEAM Academy 7th grade student. And I'm here to talk about the Verizon App Challenge. The Verizon App Challenge is a contest put on by Verizon to see the best app ideas students can come up with under, with, under the given categories, which this year were healthcare, sustainability, and education. This contest connects students to the real world and the situations and teaches business skills. Winners get $20,000 for their schools and new tablets. This app is called Super Scanner, and what it basically does is you would put your finger down for three seconds, and then it would tell you all your medical history, your blood type, if you have diabetes or not. And this would help you in the real world, in a crisis where the victim would be unresponsive, and you put their finger down, and if they had diabetes, you could just see that they would have low blood sugar, and then it would help them.
Hello, Nico Lembovolpe. This time I will be talking about the coding that we've been doing in engineering class. And recently in that class, we've been participating in an internationally recognized project called An Hour of Code. And this is when for the entire class, we just work on our computers, playing, doing challenges that teach us basic coding. The favorite challenges and games that we do, I think, is Code Combat, and we have a link to show you. You would enter the code of the side to tell the knight what to do, how to move, and who to attack. And so you could type code... Oh, oh dear. This is basically a different game. We also play games, Bits Box and Code Monkey.
Hello, my name is Joshua Flaherty, and I am also a 7th grade student in the STEAM Academy. This year, we had access to Finch Robots in engineering class. Finch Robots are little white robots shaped like birds, like little birds. Finches, which you can program. There are little blocks of commands we use that flow together. You can tell them to move, light up, make noise. We have photos of the Finch Robots in action. In this, they're playing some games.
I'm Jasmine Black. I'm a 7th grade STEAM Academy student. In our math class, we have been creating our own personal math textbook. We call this the Interactive Student Notebook. Every lesson that we have, we are giving a worksheet or a foldable that we complete and glue into our notebooks. If we have our notebooks with us, we're allowed to use them on quizzes or tests. We, we also personalized our cover when we first, in the beginning of the year, and we have all of the table of contents to tell which lessons that we had.
Hello, I'm Trinity Donnell, and I'm from Wareham STEAM Academy. I'm in 7th grade, and I'm going to be talking about science. In science, we are doing a lot of hands-on lessons and learning real-life skills. Right now, we are learning about manufacturing process. We just did a project in which we had to create a package to keep a product safe from heat and water. However, we had to stay within the given price range.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Fisher from the STEAM Academy 7th grade. I'm going to be talking about cranberries. At the beginning of the year, we were introduced to a project building a cranberry bog. So far, we have picked a location for the bog using the Scientific Decision Matrix. We also use knowledge from the AD Makepeace field trip, where we learned how bogs perform naturally, how to mimic nature and make one on our own. In science, we learn the different growing conditions cranberries require due to the native topography. Also, in our humanities, we study the history of cranberry bogs in our area. And I have a cranberry bog that we made from AD Makepeace.
Thank you for supporting our staff and making the STEAM Academy possible.
Thank you.
Thank you. Does the committee have any questions at this time or comments?
Oh, yes.
Committee? No? Jeff? Mr. Swat?
Is there any way the students could, could come down here in the, in the center?
They might need a microphone, Jeff.
And can we get them a microphone?
Yep. When, when someone wants to speak back, just pick up the microphone on the table and talk, okay? Alright, great.
So, my question for anybody who would like to answer it is, the STEAM Academy is not just, is not for all students. It's for some students. And I'm sure that you've talked with students who are not in the STEAM Academy. My sense is you're having fun, but who's learning more? The students who are in the STEAM Academy or the students who are not in the STEAM Academy? And if so, why?
Well, I think that the STEAM Academy students and the, like, normal students that aren't out of STEAM Academy, I think they're, they're learning about the same amount, it's just in different ways. So the STEAM Academy students, they're learning more about group work, but they're still learning the same basic things as like science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. So, like, with the people out of STEAM, then they're working more on like individual things and things just like, like solo, and...
It was great.
Good job! Good job! Excellent! Anyone else?
I could keep asking questions for the next half hour, but...
Anyone else? Mrs. Beugan? Oh, um, go ahead, young man, go ahead.
Um, I think the, the STEAM Academy students are learning just as much as the other students, but, except for in like humanities, because we combine all of those subjects into one class. So we have to kind of, because it's more focused on the math, science, technology, and engineering parts of it. So, I think we don't learn as much in that aspect, but I think that the other, that the good outweighs the bad.
Thank you very much. Very, very well done.
You have another.
I think that all students are learning the same thing, except in STEAM Academy, you get a little bit more with the engineering and technology that we have in Mr. Walker's class, and that we get to do a lot more real-world stuff, and the other kids don't get to do as much real-world stuff.
Okay.
Good. Mrs. Beugan?
I know that you've been in it for half a year now, but my question is, now that you've been in the STEAM Academy, has it brought you closer to a career that you might want to undertake after you get out of college?
I think that it has, because learning in like technology and science is maybe want to be either an engineer or a scientist. Supposed to, if we were out of STEAM, we, I kind of just like wander on careers because I wouldn't really know what I'd really want to do.
Great.
Excellent. Good answer. Anyone else?
I think that it actually really helps deciding what you would like to do later in life, because earlier, when we were signing up for the STEAM Academy, they ask you questions like, "Why do you want to be in the STEAM Academy?" "Why do this, certain STEAM topics interest you more?" So for the people who want to pursue those careers, I think it really helps to push them farther.
Thank you.
Alright.
Well done. Any other student? Any other questions from the committee?
Mike?
Mr. Flaherty?
Do you all have, Mrs. LaSosa for math?
Yes.
What was your impression of the flip?
You already know his answer.
Well, yeah.
Um, I think the flip is pretty cool. Just, um, we don't really do it anymore because some people did not have internet access at home. So, it ended up not being able to work out. And, um, yeah.
I like the version of how Ms. LaSosa put together the flip because it was easier for us to do our homework, and we had more notes for us when we had our quizzes or tests that we had to do in our classes. So, it depends, it all depends on what the notes that you took. And it explains what the homework is easier, because the videos that we watched online earlier in the year, it was easier to do our homework, so...
Thank you. Mr. Flaherty?
And I guess this is to Mrs. LaSosa, because I remember that at the beginning, and the, the parents are actually required to watch the first one to see how it worked. And interestingly, Mrs. LaSosa was, you know, giving a whole list of ways that we can work around not being able to do it. And the, and the last, the, the take-home message was, you know, "Don't worry, we'll make it work." So what happened?
So, we, we actually are going to go back to it. It's become a... We saw it. It's become a blended kind of classroom. So, the first few units that we did, we did videos. We also... We also tested, used some of the LearnZillion videos. But the last two chapters that we did, we did integer operations, and the students actually taught those classes in groups. For whatever reason, none of them want to be teachers now. I don't know. So, we did, we did integer operations. We did not flip, because the students were teaching those individual ones, and they made up classwork and homework. And then in this section, we've been doing rational numbers, they're moving at their own pace based on a pre-test. So, after the holidays, the first week back, we are actually being part of a field test for the Educational Development Corporation and an app that they're using to teach equations. And then after that, we are going to go back to the flip method. We do have a few students who don't have access. And, and like you said, we found that we have some workarounds for those. So, it's sort of, when I first presented it, we were doing it, it was sort of an all or nothing. And this year, we're trying a bunch of different ways to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty. Anyone else on the committee?
I'm sorry, I would just also like to recognize three students that are here tonight, also representing Steam Academy and supporting their classmates, Lucas Watkins, Walter Weber, and Sarah Westgate.
Thank you very well. Thank you. Well, again, I think I speak for the school committee and the entire administrative team and the teachers for Wareham Public Schools, that you young people are a shining example of what goes on in Wareham Public Schools, and we really appreciate your efforts, because we know that these programs are really worthwhile, and you are shining examples of Wareham's dedication to provide innovative programs for our young people, to challenge their creativity, and to definitely build an academic integration. So, I want to thank you very, very much for not only representing Wareham Public Schools, but the, the way you represented your parents and your families. And I want to wish all of you very, very happy holidays. Thank you so much. Next on the agenda is a request for a student trip. Oh, oh, forgot. Forgot. I'm sorry. Yes, we're not done with Steam yet. Go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Julie Walker. I'm the Technology and Engineering teacher for the Steam Academy at the Wareham Middle School. And we are excited, and Sue Tabor is the Science teacher, and Bonnie LaSosa is the Math teacher, and Janice Barton is the Humanities teacher for the Steam Academy. And we're here tonight to introduce our working cranberry bog outdoor classroom project to the school committee and to the town. So, this year's Steam Academy had, had an overarching theme, which was exploring our community, focusing on the cranberry industry. And with that, we are, Innovation Eco Project and Sustainability Projects were inspired by the Crazin. The cranberry industry has been a theme throughout the year, as the students just described. And even in our general curriculum for sci, for sci, for science and math, we have integrated lessons that involve the cranberry industry. So, with that, one of our projects is to create a working cranberry bog outdoor classroom that the students are going to design in the Engineering and Technology class, and they're going to actually build this, this cranberry bog. I've gone a little too fast through slides, but I feel like the students gave us quite an introduction of all of the different projects that we've been doing related to the cranberry bog. The reason that we want to do this, we want to build this working cranberry bog is because we feel that it will improve the student awareness of the community's industry. It will enhance their understanding about different science, the science of the cranberry bog. It will also provide them with some hands-on learning of how, how the engineering design process works, how costing out a project works, how figuring out the amount of materials needed works. And, and through all of those, those steps of the process, they'll be learning and using math, science, and humanities skills. The most exciting thing about our, our working cranberry bog outdoor classroom is that when it's created, it will be a, an outdoor classroom for all students, all teachers to, to utilize. And so, this is, this is the, this is our diagram of the, of the outdoor classroom, working cranberry bog. And it, just so you have a perspective, what we have designed is that it will, and what will be constructed would be two adjacent working cranberry bogs, but they're garden-sized. They'd be about 20 feet by 40 feet, side by side, with a pathway around the entire, the entire bog and down the middle, so that there would be a place for students to observe the different, the different growing process or the different sediment that we're looking at. And so, so this particular location was actually determined using, by the students, and with Mr. Minkle's help, we, we surveyed the different vacant grassy areas around the property. The students came up with a decision matrix. They, they, they listed the different growing criteria for the cranberry bog. And so, where we've, we've placed this is at the end of the grassy piece of land, next to the D-wing of the middle school, which provides easy access for all teachers in the middle school outside of the cafeteria doors. It doesn't, it wouldn't impact any of the classrooms, because it's not, it's not right outside any classroom windows. But it's close enough that a teacher could, could walk their classroom out there during the day. And we've got seating, so there's seating provided out there, so a teacher could bring their entire class and just conduct a lesson out there. Or the students could actually work around the cranberry bog once it's constructed. So, almost two years ago, the group of, the group of us worked together at a professional development, and we came up with this idea to, to build a cranberry bog. And so, back during the summer of 2013, we approached the Cape Cod Cranberry Growers, we approached the UMass Cranberry Experimental Station, Beaton's Cranberry Grower Service, and 80 Make-Bees about building a working cranberry bog outdoor classroom. And the support and the enthusiasm by all of those, those entities has been amazing. So, last summer in 2014, when we, when the Steam Academy was, was about to kick off, we met with, with all of those entities, and we've started planning the cranberry bog. And so, just recently, we met here at Wareham Middle School and went over some of the logistics of, of the current location. Last winter, the Cranberry Education Foundation, which is comprised of members from each of those other entities, nominated the cranberry bog project, or the working cranberry bog outdoor classroom project for an Eastern Bank Community Grant, which we were awarded for $2,500. So, with, this, this project will be fully funded through grant money and donations and volunteer time. The various cranberry industry professionals have offered to donate materials, such as sand and vine, and even piping. And so, the grant money that we have secured so far would pay for things like fencing and the benches for the outdoor classroom.
All right, thank you very much. Committee, questions, comments?
I don't think they're done.
Do you have anything else?
Oh, I thought that we're done. Oh.
We just have, we have a few things with us, actually, I forgot to mention.
It was a pause, so I...
We have, I'm sorry. We have a letter of support from the different cranberry industry, industry organizations, just stating that, that they are excited to be part of this community-based project here at the middle school, Steam Academy.
Is that it? That's your presentation? Okay. Committee, any questions, comments? Mrs. Vugan?
Thank you for presenting tonight. I really appreciate it. What I like about the project is that it takes something that Wareham is known for, and it brings it into our school system. So, it's teaching from, what I'm seeing in the proposal, everything from the elementary schools all the way through. And it's teaching them something that is homegrown right here in our community. So, I love that aspect of it. The, the questions that I have really have to do about, first of all, I'm a fan of the curriculum and how you guys laid out all different things around the Steam curriculum and different classes and different things that you can teach the kids. I thought that was great. The questions that I have is, in addition to the, what 80 Make-Bees and others are doing, have you talked to them anything about, especially with the older kids, job sharing or opportunities that they could actually have hands-on experience and actually get paid for it, maybe? Kind of as a career path in different companies around here? And if it's okay, if you haven't yet.
We've, we have spoken to them about different career opportunities within the cranberry industry, but not necessarily as a, as a younger... I, I think your question, I'm interpreting your question as almost like a part-time job that this could stem right into.
Right.
We've been, I haven't talked about that with them as much as we have talked about how this experience will, will be something they can take with them after col, you know, to college and after. But I like that idea of, of helping them find a, a summer job.
Right.
Through these connections.
Awesome. And then what about the ongoing funding with this? I mean, it's great to be able to have a start with the seed money, and everyone's excited right in the beginning, very beginning of the project. But are, is, is there a long-term plan to make sure that the funding streams keep coming in and that the supporters are still there to make sure that this continues for years and years and years to come?
Yes, we do have a plan to continue to secure funding for our projects through grants. The size of our bog is, is, is quite small, and it's not going to require a lot of additional funding to, to, to keep it, to keep it going. We have two options that we're considering right now with our two locations that we're proposing. And one of them is to grow one of those bogs organically and the other traditionally. So, that would even lower maintenance costs for, and that... So, most of our costs are going to be upfront, and, and we think that, that that's going to, you know, and then the additional grants that we apply for will, will help.
Great. Just the last comment that I'll make is, you guys should definitely do a mini Cranberry Festival. Pre-Cranberry Festival, so then, you know, as a fundraising opportunity.
I also want to add that Beyond School Time is partnering with us because of the summer work in weeding and feeding, and that it'll continue all the way through, you know, the full calendar year with their support. We've worked with them so that we don't have to worry about what happens to the bog when the buses leave in June, that we have a way to deal with it in the, in the summer months during, during, during that season.
Well, the proposal was excellent. You guys have just thought of, you know, everything. And so, congratulations and good luck.
Anyone else from the board? Mr. Swett?
Welcome. I know what you guys do in your spare time. That is to say, you don't have any after having this kind of project. Do you have any concerns about the initial construction? What are the contingencies, variabilities? What's, what are your biggest things that you go home and worry about with respect to this project?
If I may, I'm, I'm newish to cranberries. I'm not from the Wareham area. After meeting with the cranberry growers, who have been, I think, who have been, only have been totally supportive since the beginning and enthusiastic, I wanted to become a cranberry grower, because they are just so, such a really, truly wonderful group of people that are truly invested in this and excited about helping us get this off the ground with the students, with, with all the product and, and the volunteering and, and everything. And I don't think we could ask for a lot more support than that.
So, the other piece to that was, when we met with them outside, when we tend to meet with people, we tend to make people's heads spin, because we all talk at once. But we were meeting outside, and one of the comments was, because of where that bog is going to be, there was a concern about saltwater coming from that marsh. And so, the best part about the outdoor classroom is that if that were to happen, if we were, you know, something to happen and, and something happened to the bog, that's an excellent learning situation. What a teachable moment to talk about what happens if something happens. So, we're not planning for it, and we're not asking for it to happen, but that's, but that's part of what we want the students to understand, is, I mean, things are going to happen.
Murphy's going to live in your bog, eh?
Absolutely. And, and that's, that's a piece of it that we want them to understand and, and learn through, especially as we continue, because the first year is about design. But then, we need to integrate it into later years to talk about how to maintain it and how to grow it, and organic versus traditional. Does the cost of one outweigh the, the yield of the other? All of those are such excellent, and I'm a math teacher, they're such cool math problems and real-world that they can deal with. The other piece that I just wanted to say, I was amazed when we met with the cranberry growers, because the conversation was, from them, we could come, they said, they could come in a week, weekend, and get it all done. And it would be no mess, no fuss. Or, they can back off and let the students do it, and get messy and dirty and learn all the lessons.
I can't imagine which choice you made.
I, I know, imagine. But that's, I mean, like Ms. Barton said, their support, they're so excited to, to talk about it, that I think that whatever contingencies happen will be covered. I really do.
What's your timeline?
So, so our timeline is that we would hope to break ground after the thaw, so early March, and would get the area ready for planting through March and April. We'd like to plant in May and then just begin operate, operating the cranberry bog before we leave school in June.
Just sitting here, I had a thought that if you ever wanted to make money out of the bog, I suspect that DECA could take over and figure out a way to make money out of it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You're welcome. Mr. Flaherty?
No, I've always looked forward to this, ever since, ever since I heard about it, and, you know, my son's in the Steam Academy. Very, very happy about it. What do you, what are your thoughts on vandalism? I mean, are you worried about that?
All right. So, we did have some thoughts about vandalism. And when you look around our community, we see bogs everywhere. And none of those bogs are protected from vandals. However, we are here with all these students around. So, our intention is to fence in the bog. And so, the black line around, around the area will be a five-foot, and, and what we have, what I have envisioned at this point, before the students get to design, so I probably shouldn't say, but I picture a five-foot black chain-link fence around it to keep vandalism out and to keep intruders off of the, off of the bog, especially where, when it's, it's establishing its roots. So, we've, with our, with our initial grant money, we would, we would, we have funded the fence that would go around it.
Speaking of fence, I know you've worked with Mr. Minkle, but I don't know if you... Speaking of fence, I know you've worked with Mr. Minkle, but I don't know if you, if you discussed anything with Mr. Palladino. I mean, you're aware, there's a three-court, tennis court proposed for right there, right? And it'll, it'll fit fine? Okay, as long as you're, as long as you're fine with it.
Anyone else on the committee? Again, I can speak for the committee. I want to thank you all for what you do. Good luck, carry on, and I think it'll be a tremendous experience for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, do we need a vote?
I don't know. Do you think we do?
Maybe. It's up to their superintendent.
I would ask for a vote, just for-
To go forward?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve the creation of a nature's classroom cranberry bog on the south side of the middle school.
Second.
I got a, motion and a second to approve the nature's classroom cranberry bog. Any other discussion?
Steve.
STEAM Academy, cranberry bog. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Five zero zero. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We have a request for a student trip. Got a lot of trips going on there, Mr. Palladino.
Even busy.
I know.
I'm going to turn this over to Mazinus, who is a Wareham High School grad and a DECA alumni, and also one of the advisors for the DECA program, and also Jessica Reed and Rebecca Blanchette. Looks like Arnie Tavaz is here as well, so he's going to jump in, and I'm going to step back, and they're going to conduct the presentation. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Welcome.
Hi.
Hello.
Disney.
So my name is Rebecca Blanchette.
And I'm Jess Reed.
And we're here to present the WHS DECA Disney Sports Entertainment Trip. So, the plan for this trip- is, it's called the DECA Sports and Entertainment Marketing Conference. We will be staying at the Pop Century Resort in Orlando, Florida. We're going to visit Orlando Studios as well as Disney. This is February 4th through the 8th of 2015, and is exclusive for senior DECA members that have an academic standing.
All right. So on February 4th, it's a Wednesday, we leave for Florida out of Providence, and arrive at Orlando International Airport. And then, at 12 o'clock that day, we arrive at Pop Century, and register, and then get situated. And for the rest of that day, we're going to spend it in downtown Disney, doing a marketing scavenger hunt and a family dinner.
The next day is February 5th. This is when we start our marketing conference in Universal Studios. We're there from 9:30 until 12:30 at the conference. Following that, we're throughout the park with a park hopper and lunch on our own. After that, we are going to have a family dinner in Universal Studios, followed by a Blue Man Group presentation. And then we are estimated to be back at Pop Century around 11 o'clock.
And Friday, February 6th, we get a shuttle to Universal again for the second half of our marketing presentation, and we have lunch on our own and get to explore Universal Studios again. And then, at 6:00 PM, we get shuttled back to the resort. And we, we haven't decided yet, but like, we had in mind, like, a Lakers versus Magic game, but that's not, like, certain yet, so. And then, February 7th is our DECA Day at Disney, and we came to the agreement that we, because we only get one park, so we chose the Magic Kingdom. And we spend the whole day there, and then return to Pop Century.
Our last day is February 8th. Not very exciting, but we're just, we're getting up early and going back from Orlando International back to Providence. Throughout our entire trip, we do have a 12 o'clock curfew, except for our day at Disney because of extra Magic hours at Magic Kingdom, which is accepted through DECA and through our advisors. The buddy system will be used. We have at least two to three people per group, just because of safety issues. We will have a minimum of four face-to-face interactions with one of our two chaperones that are accompanying us, as well as constant communication via text message. Our chaperones are Monice Maurice and Janine Inos, who are two of our DECA advisors. So, up there, we have a breakdown of how much it does cost, but at the end of the day, it does cost $925 for each student.
And to accommodate different family situations, we designed a payment plan, where it's like you pay in $300 increments.
Throughout the conference, they're going to be reinforcing many marketing standards, such as the nature of target marketing, pricing issues, advertising media, the use of licensing, career opportunities, for, the need for sports entertainment marketing information, sales promotion, ways to segment, and economic impact. And that is it. So thank you for your time, and do you have any questions?
Thank you. I'll start the questioning.
Sure.
For change. This is, this is not nothing, this is not a, a new thing. This is something that Wareham DECA has done for quite a while now. Is that correct?
Actually, it is not.
It's not?
I think you're thinking about Marketing Disney.
Yes.
Marketing Disney is a week in Disney specifically.
Okay, so this is different?
Yes. That was about $1,600 per person.
All right.
And we determined that was a lot too much for each student to go. So, our second option was this conference, because it does, it involves the marketing concept and our competition into the conference.
But it is sponsored by National DECA?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Questions?
Uh, yield to you, sir.
To, Mr. Swett?
So, I spent most of my career in healthcare, and physicians are famous for going on professional development excursions, where they spend 5% of their time trying to become better doctors, and 95% of their time trying to improve their golf and tennis game. And so, when I look at this, I see six hours of, and I could be wrong, so please feel to correct me, feel free to correct me. I see six hours of actual presentations, and I, out of a little over 100 hours that you'll be gone. So that sounds like you're learning to become a doctor, in the sense that most of this is going to be play. Is this a, is that a fair characterization of, of this? This is mostly fun and, and a little learning?
No. No, um, it is, it is based toward us having a fun time, but at the same time-
There's nothing wrong with that, Buzz.
Yeah. But we are incorporating the school and competition and DECA aspect into it, because at least during the first day, we are having a marketing scavenger hunt, which our head, one of our head advisors is making for us. We're doing that, and as well in the three hours each day. Those aren't only them talking to us, but it's like workshops that will be going through, interacting with other kids from the East Coast, I believe, that will be attending the conference. So it is us going for fun, but there is a lot of school base and interaction with other students on marketing in there.
This is school vacation week, correct?
No.
No.
No. Oh. Okay. Thank you.
I just wanted to add to that a little bit, that the students, you know, they work really, really hard, obviously, you know, and it's a great payoff for them, all their hard work. They're all seniors, you know, DECA members, and they've been successful at competition, and have all traveled as a group, and have been a great representation of Wareham High School thus far, and I know that they'll do the same here. But I think it's a fantastic opportunity. We offer a sports and entertainment class at the high school, and it's a, a lot of these seniors that are attending the conference are going to be able to get a real-world example of what they've actually learned in the classroom. I think it's a, a great way to expose them to different, you know, industries and real-world examples that they have learned, you know, in the classroom, so.
Rebecca mentioned academic eligibility or some, academic something. What, what does that mean?
So, we're basing it off the same academic standing that you have to have to play sports at the high school, which is no more than two Fs.
So it's not the same as senior privileges?
No.
Oh, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Lazarus? How many of you are going on this trip?
There are 15 students and two advisors.
Thank you. Any other questions on the committee? Mrs. Vugan?
Just one. I saw that you had the payment plan available. Are you providing fundraising opportunities for the students? Are you doing any of that work?
All the students that are going to the trip are in the DECA, the National DECA Organization, and through that, we have our fundraising VPs this year. So it's like, we broke down each group, so we have a fundraising committee of about 10 to 15 students, and we do have ongoing fundraising that they can apply to this trip.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Anyone else on the committee? Okay, Mr. Lazarus had to excuse himself, so I'm going to wait on the vote until he returns, if the committee doesn't mind. Is there anything that anyone else would like to say? Mr. Palladino?
The only thing I would say is, most of these kids have a senior privilege because they're academic standing, so the requirement would be for them to pass all the classes but one, but I can assure you that in looking at the students that have signed up, they're all in excellent standing. So I don't think any of them have a failure at this point in time, and I don't anticipate that to be the case come February.
Very good. Thank you. All right, what, go ahead, yeah.
Just to add to that, they've actually, have all been proactive in reaching out to all of their teachers ahead of time, too, to make sure that they've, you know, made arrangements with those teachers, and that there's an understanding that they're going to be missing those three days of school. So, all the teachers have agreed that they would send them any homework via email, so that they can get that done while they're away.
Thank you.
Is this, I have, is this before or after district competition?
This is after.
After?
It's after districts, but before states.
Before states. So, so you kids that are competing would have a certain advantage at state competition by attending this conference, is that correct?
Yes.
And that's probably one of the rationales?
Yes.
Yeah, I kind of figured. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. If there are no other questions, I would like to just delay the vote for a second until we can have a full complement of the school committee. But if, if, if you don't mind, we'll go on to the next order of business, and then we'll come back to the vote.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for presenting a great presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, Mr. Palladino, it just ties in, I guess, we need a discussion about the eligibility committee you put together about a recommendation to us on academic eligibility for co-curricula.
Sure, thank you. I'm going to bring up Ed Rodericks, who is our athletic director. And we were asked to comprise a committee to take a look at the eligibility, not just for athletics, but for all extracurricular activities. And we had a meeting on Thursday, November 13th, to review the current eligibility requirements, and then to make a formal recommendation. The committee consisted of Ed Rodericks, the athletic director, Melvin Lazarus, the school committee member, David Bajoli, a girls' basketball coach, Sherri Miller, a parent, Terrell Matthews, a student athlete, and myself. The committee reviewed the current eligibility requirements, and researched other schools' eligibility requirements in the South Coast Conference, and some surrounding schools that are not in the South Coast Conference. The committee voted unanimously 6-0 to recommend the athletic extracurricular eligibility requirement stay as is. Students must pass at least six courses to be eligible. We also reviewed this with the Wareham High School School Council, who voted unanimously to maintain the current system for eligibility. If I can, I'd like to hand out to you two pieces of paper. One is the breakdown of eligibility by school, and I'll go through that. Schools in the South Coast Conference and schools neighboring us, we looked at Carver, Plymouth, and New Bedford. And I'll hand that out, and I'll go through the, the eligibility that all these schools have.
Thank you.
While he's doing that, Mr. Lazarus is back. I'll, I'll entertain a motion on the DECA trip.
I make a motion to approve the student trip for the DECA Sports and Entertainment Marketing Conference.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. I think we've discussed it in depth, but go ahead.
I'd like to amend the motion. I'd like to make, I, I view this trip, by the way, I, I'm a huge supporter of DECA. I think it's a, the students in it do a fantastic job, and, and I think they come out better for having been a part of DECA. But I think, when you're talking about days away from school, it's, it's a privilege. And if it's going to be a privilege, it needs to be earned. And I think it needs to be earned by making sure that the students that go on it have the same level of academic performance as those that have senior privileges. So I would like to amend this, so that the academic requirements to go on this trip not be the eligibility that we're about to discuss, but rather the eligibility created by the senior privileges that we've already approved.
Do I hear a second on the amendment?
Second, for discussion.
Go ahead.
Specifically, what are the senior eligibility requirements?
I was afraid you'd ask me that. I know they're tougher. Mr. Palladino can probably articulate them well.
So, minimum of an 80 average, no failures in current classes, no attendance issues, no behavioral issues, and that's pretty much the basis. And then, obviously, a recommendation by the dean of, of students for that grade level.
Then I 100% concur with that amendment.
All right, any further discussion? All right, we're going to vote first on the amendment, and then on the main motion. All in favor of Mr. Swett's amendment to, to maintain the same academic standards as senior privileges in order to attend the DECA trip? Calling for a vote? For a vote? Yeah.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Yep. Okay, 5-0-0. So now that becomes the main motion, to approve the Florida trip, as amended, that all of the stipulations associated with senior privileges would apply for participation in this Florida trip. All in favor?
For discussion, Mr. Chair?
More discussion?
I have one, I have a clarifying question.
Go ahead.
This is to Mr. Palladi, Mr. Principal Palladino through you? Sorry.
That's okay.
Because this is a 2015 trip, students that, that, that were voting on this today, they will have the ability that if they are in a warning state, that they'll be able to bring that up, because again, it's not until next year, senior class privileges go into, or is, it is this year?
Yeah.
Okay. So will students have the ability to move into, that, that are expecting to go on this trip, do they have the ability to move up to still attend?
Yes. So every term, we review the senior privileges. Coincidentally, we'll be reviewing senior privileges at the end of January. So absolutely, if a, if a student is not in senior privilege standing at this point in time, they absolutely could move into that standing for the end of January.
Thank you.
But I, again, I've reviewed all these students' grades. This will not be an issue-
Just wanted to make sure.
But, yes, to answer your question, yes.
Okay.
Okay, seeing no further discussion. All in favor of the DECA trip to Florida as amended, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 5-0-0. Thank you very much.
Have fun.
Mr. Palladino?
Okay, so I snuck in Rule 58 while I, I had some time to give you another handout. And that's just for your reference. That's, I, I took that from the MIAA handbook, which is also known as the Blue Book, because it used to be blue before they put it online. There's page 57 and 58, basically speaking to Rule 58, which is student eligibility for academic requirements. I'll get to that momentarily. I, I do want to have your attention, if I can, on the, on the athletic eligibility for the South Coast Conference. And I, I want to go by this line, one school at a time, and we have monthly meetings with the principals, so I, I receive this directly from the principals at one of our meetings. And as you can see, we'll go through it alphabetically upon a quit. Students are required to pass five classes. The total classes that are enrolled is, is six. And I, I just wanted to make sure we're comparing apples to apples in regards to the lowest passing grades. Everyone but Bourne is a 65 on the, on the South Coast Conference, so I'll omit that moving forward. Bourne is, is five class- Uh, Bourne is, is five classes to pass, total of seven the student takes. Case is a little bit different, but basically, I'm gonna call it five out of seven. DR, six out of eight. Fairhaven, five out of seven. Uh, Greater New Bedford Volk, because it's a vocational school, you can't fail eight credits, you can take thirty-six, uh, a semester, um, so it's a little bit different because it's, it's a vocational school. Well, Rochester, five out of seven, and obviously, you're very familiar with us, uh, at six out of eight. Um, if we can move down to the bottom, uh, the MIAA Rule Fifty-Eight speaks to students must pass four full-year courses, or the equivalent of full-year courses. Carver is, is six out of seven. Uh, Plymouth is six out of seven, they used to be regional schools, so their, their requirements are the same, and New Bedford is a block schedule, uh, three out of four, and I'll, I'll add sandwiches, three out of four, too. So, that's where we're at. Uh, the committee took all this into consideration. Um, I, I'm concerned, I, I know Ed and I spoke to you, I believe it was la, at the end of last spring, we certainly wanna increase the rigor, uh, but we have a concern, because we're already at a tremendous disadvantage from a competitive standpoint and from a participation standpoint, and you'll hear that in the next presentation coming up in regards to fall sports. This could turn into a reason for students to leave Wareham via school choice, because the two schools that neighbor us and also have school choice, uh, only require five out of seven to participate in sports. Uh, Ed and I are definitely all about increasing the rigor, but we wanna be cautious when we increase the rigor, and we wanna make sure we don't exclude students, um, that, that need this. I think you heard, uh, from Mr. Bajoli earlier, and, um, you know, there are a lot of students, and you can, he's got a ton of anecdotal stories about students that we have saved through athletics, and you talk to any coach, and that's the case. During the high school time, i- it's a time for students to push the envelope, and I just don't wanna be in a position where a student is not willing to take the risk because athletics means that much to that person. So, I think we need to certainly, uh, move forward cautiously, and, uh, Ed and I are all about pushing the envelope with rigor. We want high expectations, you saw some of our best and brightest just a few minutes ago, and, uh, our school is filled with those type of kids. So, um, that's where we're at as far as the, the eligibility, uh, the, the Rule Fifty-Eight is, is more for your, uh, records, um, but certainly, we would, uh, and, love to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Um, I, I'd like to start, um, take some achievement privileges here. I, um, I've always been one for increasing rigor and, um, you know, making sure that Wareham kids perform, um, to the best of their ability, and to make sure that we set the bar where we think that they're gonna be able to make it, and, um, you know, for the most part, um, I, I think our kids are, but I'm also a believer that, um, we honor the process, and, um, and we listen to our professionals, and we listen to the people that are in the trenches, in the schools, and they probably have a handle on, um, you know, the culture and the, both the academic and the social culture of the school. With that being said, um, I also, I'm getting ahead of myself, took a look at Mr. Rodriguez's report for the fall, and judging from the team GPAs, we really don't have a problem. Uh, we, we, we maintain over an eighty average across the board in every single sport, and so I think if we've got a, a situation where we've got some kids that we can nurture along and, uh, you know, and make sure that they're getting what they need to get from their education, um, that I have to honor, I have to honor that. So, I have to honor the process, I have to honor where we are right now, and I have to honor the recommendation of the professionals that work for the school department. So, therefore, it's my position, um, to abide by your recommendation. Anyone else? Mr. Flaherty?
Um, yes, you, you were tasked with creating a, a committee, um, and I, I went back to that August meeting, I listened to it, I watched it again, and, um, that committee was supposed to be comprised of students, teachers, uh, parents, you know, but I see here that there was a parent, a student, a teacher, um, there was supposed to be, actually, was there a teacher? No, there wa, there wasn't a teacher. Um, and, uh, it's supposed to be school committee members, a couple, um, so there was one school committee member, a coach, a parent, and a student, and, well, I'd like to know the, what was discussed, I mean, because I think Rhonda, Mrs. Bugan, brought up the good point the last time we discussed this, what is the most valid reason for not holding kids, you know, to a standard of not failing classes to either toss a ball or to the horn?
I, I think the biggest concern that the committee had is that students would not take academic risk, because to a percentage of students, athletics is more important than school itself, um, and they were concerned that those kids that are at risk, that don't come from maybe a traditional home, we would lose those students. So, that was their concern, um, you know, and Ed, you were involved, please?
Well, one thing I'd like to say, I, I know most of you know that, and I'm from New Bedford, uh, similar community in some ways to this, some ways a lot, lot worse off, and I coached for thirty-some odd years, and I had a lot of good players go to, really, pre-seed schools like Harvard and things of that nature. But one, one example I just wanna give is, um, one of my players was an A, A student, for most of the time, AB student, had a hard time with his Spanish course, and, and he did all the, all the things he was supposed to do, went for extra help, did his homework, the whole bit, teacher wouldn't buzz, bu, budge on it, and he failed the course. He ended up passing it for the year, but by failing that course, if we had that new, uh, zero, uh, zero tolerance, he wouldn't have been able to play basketball. This kid went on to play at Boston College, and there's no way, if he missed his whole junior year, would've went to Boston College. And, most of his, most of his grades were As and Bs, and that's why he was able to get into Boston College. But one mistake, uh, you know, and that, and that's what'll happen, it could, could turn a kid right off, and, and I just think that it's, it's, it's too high, too high of a, of a price.
But, but what we discussed was, was maybe, you know, zero tolerance, maybe the so-called safety net, we didn't get any of that, no options, it's just like, unanimously, we, we disagree with this, and previously, I thought you were in favor of something like that, Mr. Rodriguez, so what sort of Jedi mind trick did Mr. Palladino pull on you?
No, we, whatever the committee, committee came to conclusion, that was the, that was it. I mean, everybody had their own say, but in the end, that's what they, they felt was appropriate. Um, you know, I'm, I'm not against approving it at all, but I mean, if that's what the committee, we, we felt we had a cross, cross view of different people, different ideas, and that's what we came up with.
I think to answer your, your, to further answer your question, from the parent's perspective and, and, uh, the coach's perspective, there are kids that are limited academically, and they're gonna be C, D, sometimes F students because of their intellect, uh, their ability, and those kids, uh, are gonna push and work hard, uh, and they may fail a course every once in a while, and the concern wa, was that we would be, uh, omitting those students, uh, from being, uh, a member of a team and, and ho, and potentially keeping them grounded to the school and eventually allowing them to graduate, so that was the concern they had. Um, so, that, I think that kinda sums up the, the committee's concerns.
So, the valid reason is that some kids put a priority on athletics over, over, over academics, and we should accommodate them. That's the valid reason.
The valid reason is some students just don't have the academic skill that, um, some of the students you heard from today and some of the students that are in the school, and, uh, they felt it was discriminatory in regard to their ability and that we would be omitting them from the potential of, of being student athletes.
And, and some kids, the only support that they really have is, is through a coach or somebody that really cares about them in that respect, and somebody that cares about their day-to-day going-ons, so when they leave that, it doesn't matter what their grades are, do you understand what I'm saying? So, th- these are the only true factors that, that are, that are positive in their life. Now, if you eliminate that from them, then not only will they not, uh, play sports, they won't, they'll drop out of school, they won't graduate, and I think that that's the bigger thing, the issue that you have to look at. I think this would cause more of an issue that way. I looked at the grades, for an example, for the fall, a hundred-and-eighty-some odd kids, only, only a handful of kids would've failed two subjects, only a handful, and maybe another five to ten would've failed one. The other hundred-and-sixty, seventy kids, whatever, failed none. Uh, I just think that the system is, is, is good the way it is, um, and I think by adding more pressure to this, it's gonna, it's gonna hurt some kids a lot.
Okay, let's move on, give everybody a chance to talk. Mr. Lazarus?
A young lady would like to speak, and then I would please.
Okay, um.
And, Mr. Chair, I'd like to hear from our superintendent as well.
Well, if she's.
We'll get to, we'll get to her, guys.
I will, you'll check whoever. Okay, Nicole?
Okay, so, um, I am very opinionated on this, because we are called student athletes for a reason, the student part comes first, as it should. If you have Fs, you are failing, literally failing, your, your role as a student, you are not performing in the thing that's supposed to be the most important, which is why you are a student athlete, and that goes for not just athletes, it goes across the board, it's just an example. Um, that said, I understand, like what you were saying, he failed his Spanish course, I understand there are hiccups, so maybe there could be a, you can only fail one course, but, uh, there needs to be, we can't just let kids slip by, because they're gonna do what they need to do to play sports, so I think, from what I've seen of my peers, if you raise the bar, most of the time, they're going to raise for it. I mean.
And I, I think Ed, Ed and I mentioned in the spring, we're not opposed to a one-failure policy, we're just not in favor of, uh, high stakes, no-failure policy, and I think that's on the record for our spring, uh, athletic report.
And, and the MIA, you have to know how they operate, too. Um, it's quarterly grades, so for an example, when you get grades at the end of the first quarter, that affects your, in, in the, in the fall would affect it, 'cause they're playing football, Thanksgiving Day game, and the winter sports. So, for an example, you could have, uh, if it would go to zero tolerance, you could have seven As and one F, okay, and you're ineligible, you're ineligible, and that, and that what happens is, is the second quarter grades affect the end of the basketball season, for an example, and the beginning of spring. It's quarterly, it's not cumulative, so for an example, you could get it, uh, an A and an F, and the F supersedes it in that class, you know what I'm, so that's how that works. So, that's why, that's the other tough dilemma you're up against. It's not a cumulative thing, it's specifically every quarter.
So, what you're saying is, an A and an F averages out to a C, but they would still be ineligible?
That's right.
Okay.
That is right.
Mr. Lazarus?
Thank you. Uh, with all due respect to you, Nicole, and any other students that are watching and listening to this, we are dealing with children. We're dealing with children. I've dealt with them for a long time in this high school, and I think that we have to recognize that children make mistakes, and if we don't recognize that, we're missing something somewhere. Children make mistakes for one reason or another, and to hold that child to a standard because they make a mistake, and say, "Well, you've made a mistake, so you cannot enjoy the other part of your education, being a student athlete," to use your words, "because you've made a mistake, you've missed the bar on one class." I think that we're making a mistake if we don't recognize that students who are still children have the right to make mistakes. So, to have this zero tolerance policy, I think, is our making a mistake.
Okay. Mr. Swett?
First of all, I wanna thank Coach Bajoli for, for coming here tonight. I think he summed up the quandary that, that I and, and a bunch of us feel, because you can very easily argue both sides of this issue, and, um, and I think we're doing that, and I hope we come to a, a good balanced, um, decision, because there is merit on both sides. Um, I am, I, I struggle with the notion that we have a system which by its very nature is, is, um, too harsh, because this notion that you can have an A and an F, and it's an F, is absurd to me.
I know, it is.
And yet, it's my understanding that this committee can do as it sees fit with respect to that.
Within MIAA guidelines?
Yeah. Well, then, then maybe someone will have to tell me whether I'm wrong, but it seems to me obvious that the, the example that, that our athletic director, uh, gave, which I thought was a relevant and constructive example of why it might be a mistake to go to zero tolerance, is easily remedied by using GPA instead of, "Did you fail a course?" Because GPA by definition says, "What kind of student are you?", it doesn't say whether you had a hiccup. You might've had a hiccup, and you still might have an excellent GPA. So, it seems to me what we really should be discussing is, and I agree with our student representative, just how seriously are you taking the role of being a student athlete, and if you had a hiccup, but your GPA is eighty-five, then who cares whether you had the hiccup in terms of eligibility for, for, uh, sports and other extracurricular activities? So, the, so the first question I have is, is it acceptable, um, and I guess I'm asking whosoever has the expertise to answer this question, is it acceptable to eliminate the policy as it applies to, "How many Fs did you have?", and simply go to a GPA, because a GPA can be determined by hitting a button on Power School?
We, we still have to abide by the MIAA regulations, which are, four Carnegie units must be passed, so regardless of a GPA, if that's not accomplished, and one would argue that if they have the GPA, it should be accomplished, but certainly, we have to keep that in consideration.
I don't think that'll be a problem.
I, I think the tough part is, um, you know, a student could have multiple failures and still have the GPA, and, and I think that's defeating the purpose of, of why we're here today.
I, I do not believe that using an absolute system is fundamentally a constructive thing to do to a student, number one. Number two, I, I disagree with my colleague, um, with respect to these are children. Um, I suspect those kids that are seventeen, eighteen-year-olds who are eligible to vote, treated as an adult within our legal system and as, and within our system as a whole, and about to hopefully to go off to college, or perhaps be employed, or go into the armed forces, or wherever they're going, I don't think they think of themselves as children. They may not be as well-developed in terms of their thinking and experiences as, quote, "adults," although we all know adults who haven't quite developed, um, but I don't think of them as children, I think they're young adults, and they're progressing on to being independent, productive individuals, and I think we, we unfairly characterize them when we think of them as children, as juniors and seniors in high school. I know we're talking about freshmen and sophomores, but there's a big difference, trust me, and every coach knows this, between a freshman and a senior. So, I think having a system that's fair and holds them accountable and has high expectations, but is not arbitrary and capricious, um, and absolute the way one failure or two failures or whatever, or no failures is, I think we have a responsibility to, to develop that system, and I'm uncomfortable with any of the compromises that I've heard tonight.
Madam Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
I have thoughts on this. Um, I do believe that it's our responsibility to educate our students. I believe that part of educating a well-rounded student may have the student participate in athletes, may have them participate in other extracurricular activities, and as a school system looking for the, um, well-rounded child, those are all valuable experiences. However, we get to the ultimate responsibility of educating our students, and academic rigor is of the utmost importance. I also believe in a process, and if we say to our student athletes that it's your responsibility to keep up your grades and to be successful in your academic endeavors, then it's our responsibility as educators to support them, and if we're going to raise the standards for our athletes, then it's our responsibility to provide, um, interventions. So, if I have a student athlete, and if I say, as a district, we are going to hold our students to a one-F or one-failure policy, or a zero-failure policy, then it's our responsibility to put some things in place to help that student. It cannot just be, "I'm sorry, you didn't pass, you are now ineligible." That's not the right thing as educators to do to our students. So, if we're going to move to a zero-F or a one-F So if we're going to move to a zero-F or a one-F policy, then it would be my recommendation to the high school principal and athletic director to come back with a plan of how are we going to support our students as we move forward. If we cannot do that, then I would not support moving to a one- or zero-F failing policy. On the other hand, I would say to all students, we should be able to provide this for all. And so, bottom line is, my recommendation is, if we move to a one-F, then we need to put some things in place. I would be asking for the high school principal and the athletic director to come up with a plan to involve teachers, but to move into this with a process. This cannot just be without support.
Mr. Chair, I've been raising my hand for a while.
You haven't spoken yet?
No, I have not.
Well, you may speak.
Really? Thank you.
I thought you had, I'm sorry.
No. Um, I appreciate the presentation from the two of you today, and also from Mr. Vajoli. I think that, um, you know, this is a, this is a healthy discussion that we're having, and I hope that we continue to have it when it comes to the rigor of, um, of our academics and, and what we're doing for kids. Since our last conversation, I've had the opportunity with, um, my career to, um, do a lot of, uh, digging in when it comes to some of the work that the YMCA is doing around education, the Educational Achievement Center. So Fall River today, um, they opened an educational achievement center that is going to help close the achievement gap, um, with Fall River students, as well as adults. As I started going through and talking with the folks that are gonna be responsible for the curriculum there, it all went back to what the superintendent said, around a support system. That, um, from the very beginning, I never believed in a one-fail and that's it, or mistakes, or anything like that. But it's basically our responsibility to create, um, a support system if a child is starting to stray from their academics. Those things like that there, they don't have a support system around them. That all of a sudden, issues have popped up in their, in their family, or their personal life, where they had no control over. These are things that happen all the time, and it's our responsibility to identify that and then create, as much as possible, that ability that if they are strained from their academics, that we know that that is a way, um, that opens up a whole new world for them, as well as athletics, but education does also. How do we kind of pull them back in? And so, um, I agree with one of my colleagues when they said that what I was hoping, um, tonight was that, all right, we still recommend a two-fail system, but things, additional things that we're going to put in, be put in place are things like, one is that if they do receive a failing grade, that they're required to do extra tutoring, or, um, or, you know, again, it's a requirement that they do extra tutoring, or they get extra help, or they participate in some sort of academic, um, help that we're, that we're providing. Or two, that they can't fail two in a consecutive, um, quarter, um, or session. Things like that, just so that it's not that we're saying it's a one-and-done, but that it's, um, if, that we place such a high importance on this, which I know that you all do, I, and you, you say it throughout every single report that you provide, but it's basically putting that into the policy, and how we're educating parents, as well as the community, and of course, the student. What are, what are additional things that we're putting in place as requirements? That if they are starting to, for me, if a student fails two courses, they're strained from their academic achievement. So how can we make sure that now, sorry, because that's happened, now you have, you have to now attend this, you have to do this? And so, I would just ask that before the committee votes one way or the other, that we do kind of take another shot at this and see if we can expand a little bit on what the policy is right now, and maybe put in a couple more pieces of rigor if all of a sudden a student does fail two classes, and come back with that proposal.
We're gonna, well, before we go round two, uh, I'll start round two, because I started round one. Did you say that the school council voted unanimously to keep it the same? So that was unanimous, or the school council?
Correct.
Okay. Now, there's a couple of things I need to, to get clarified in my, in my own brain. In terms of, we're using the word rigor, you know, and, and I, I really don't like using that word because this has nothing to do with rigor, this has to do with the grade. You know, the rigor comes from the curriculum and what's being taught in that classroom. And I contend that we have rigor. And so, uh, to, 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 to bring that term into this discussion, um, I, I think is, is not appropriate at this particular time. Because I would contend, uh, at least I would hope, um, that I could be reasonably sure that there was rigor in every classroom. The other thing that I, I think that has to be mentioned is, in terms of the higher standards, we're among the highest standards from a variety of reasons. You mentioned some, I'll mention the third, is that every single one of our kids takes eight classes. Not five, not six, not seven, but eight. Ladies and gentlemen, that's rigor. They're not, they're not sitting in non-academic settings. They are taking eight classes, and out of those eight classes, they have to succeed in six of them. So, um, I don't think it's a matter of rigor, I think it's a matter of a grade. And I think that, given the fact that our kids have to take eight classes at the high school level, is, is a very, very high standard. I do, however, agree with Mrs. Vugan, with her point, that, um, if, if we stray, or if this committee cannot support your recommendation, that we revisit this. And I said early on, I will never vote for zero. I, I might as well let the committee know that right now, I'll never vote for zero. But I will vote for one if certain safeguards are put in there. And I think that that's what Mrs. Vugan was talking about. I don't know what those safeguards could be. Could be tutorial, could be, uh, an extra report, I don't know. Uh, it would be an individual contract, probably based on the individuality of the student. You know, because every student's problems, and every student's learning abilities and learning styles is different. So, uh, unless, my, 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 uh, my, uh, position now is that if we're not gonna support your recommendation, that we come back to this with, with clear-cut specifics as to, uh, a compromise. Uh, because I really don't think we're ready to vote on any kind of a compromise at this point in time, unless it's a zero, unless it's a zero tolerance. And I, I, I don't know how the rest of the committee would vote on it, but I'll tell you right now, I would vote absolutely positively no on a zero-tolerance policy. Mr. Flaherty?
Thank you. I, I think we're getting a little hung up on, on the, the term zero tolerance. And, and yeah, truth be told, I'd, I'd be in favor for a zero-tolerance policy, right off, just flat zero tolerance. But what I was hoping to hear, from the discussion we had last time, was Dr. Silvy had mentioned the safety net. You know, and when I hear safety net, I, I, I actually hear loophole, all right? So I, I don't want loopholes, I want there to be a real safety net. And, and he referenced Sandwich a bunch, a bunch of times. They don't have a zero-tolerance policy, but I looked, and, and they have something, you know, interesting.
He changed after I left.
Yeah. I mean, I mean, they, they go on probation, and it lasts a little while, and you, you can go on probation once in your four-year career at, at Sandwich, and that's, that's your, that's your out. And they even give, you know, specific advice to freshmen to say, you know, be careful if you use your waiver, because it's one-and-done.
One-and-done.
All right? So, so that, that's an option, I mean, that, that you could look at. What troubles me is that your, your concern is losing these students that wanna, that wanna be able to get an F. You, you hope we might lose these students to neighboring schools because they wanna get an F, or two, right? You know, I'm gonna read to you, this is Upper Cape. Wareham Student School in the Upper Cape, this is from their student school, their student handbook. "In order to be eligible to participate for the second marking term and every marking term thereafter, a student must," and it gives three things, "the first one, number one, be passing all subjects to be eligible for athletics and extracurricular activities." You know, we can poo-poo Upper Cape all we want, but there's talk in the talk, and there's walk in the walk. And that's a school that I consider sending my son to.
It's a selective school as well, that, that plucks from the top.
I'm just saying, Wareham students are going there, and they're doing fine.
You know, I, I wanna go back to my ten years of coaching, and I, I, I still don't think that you, that, that everyone has a pulse on some of the kids that we deal with. We graduate kids that if they didn't attend Wareham High School, would not graduate. And a big portion of that is because of athletics and extracurricular activities. And I think it's important, we seem to be caught up on athletics, but there are more kids involved in extracurricular activities such as band, drama, JROTC. You wanna, you wanna take a look at a niche, go down and check out the JROTC room, and, and see the program that they're completing, and what they're doing with these kids that otherwise would fall through the cracks. And, you know, so, I, I really think, you know, it would be worthwhile for everyone to come in and take a look at the different programs, and talk to the kids, and find out about their home lives. Because it's not a traditional home life that some of these kids are dealing with. There's dysfunction. They're living with grandparents, foster parents, group homes. It's not a traditional nuclear family. And I think that's important. We're not dealing with an atypical family, we're not dealing with probably many of your families and the way you were raised. We're dealing with some dysfunction in this, in this town.
I, I'm actually, I think, my own opinion, I think I'm pretty darn aware of that. Unfortunately, for reasons that I won't mention at this table.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Uh, Mr. Swett?
I have not heard a good argument for why the safety net should not be GPA. And here's, here's my point. I think we can distinguish between someone who's got As and Bs and an F, and someone who's got six Ds and two Fs. There's, that's a huge difference. After all, we want to get this person, um, we want to get a diploma in this person's hands that means something. So I am less concerned with whether the person has one or two Fs than I am is, how are they doing as an overall student? So to me, what I, and I agree we're not ready to vote. To me, what I'd like to, to come back to this committee is, maybe there should be, we could keep the two Fs, maybe it should go to one. I understand the logic, even though I greatly appreciate my colleague's passion, uh, with respect to this, meaning Mr. Flaherty. But it seems to me the safety net would be, okay, we don't expect you to fail anything, but if you do fail one or two, depending on what the policy is, you better have a GPA of at least X. I'm not even saying what X should be. I'll leave it to you to come back to us with a recommendation. But if I knew that the person was, was an overall good student, but had what we're calling a hiccup, and I, believe me, I do not appreciate the fact that you can get a B in, in first term, and then an F, and the, the B doesn't matter. To me, that's just wrong, but if that's the rule, that's the rule. So I would like you to come back to the committee that says, that has a policy as I described it. If you, if you fail a course or two, then you better have a GPA of X. If you don't fail a course or two, we're not gonna even look at your GPA because you've shown that you're a competent student, even if you're not doing great, you're at least taking all your courses seriously. And I'll yield the rest of my time to my colleague.
Uh, Mr. Lazarus?
I just have a question. Gentlemen, you know the MIAA stuff better than I do. Is the issue of GPA compatible with MIAA rules? Or are we gonna run into a conflict with them?
So, no, the MIAA is kind of the threshold. The schools can add to that. So for instance, technically, when I started as principal, the, the students had to pass four classes. We had, as you know, seven, seven classes, so four out of seven. When we changed the schedule, we said we wanted to not just move it up to five, we wanted it to be six. Everyone voted, it was unanimous. Some schools have a GPA requirement. There's not any in the South Coast Conference that do, but there are some schools, well, I guess you would argue Case does. But most schools don't, but it's, there are some schools in the state, um, that do have a GPA requirement. Usually it's a seventy or seventy-five. But, you know, to me, that's, that's, that's too low.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, uh, any other discussion? Is there, is there gonna be a motion at this particular point in time? Or are we gonna ask for this issue to be revisited? Is anyone ready to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, am I correct that no matter what we voted, this was going to be, only affect the fall of two thousand fifteen?
Well, that would, that would be my intent, and I would make that as part of the motion. Not for this year.
It's just out of fairness, it seems to me, that's the only way we could do it. So, given that, then I would, I would not so much make a motion, but ask the chair to request our guests here that they come back at their earliest convenience, but hopefully sometime in January.
I agree.
We'll be here anyway.
And maybe I'm overstepping my bounds, um, and please correct me if I am, but I, I, I sense that I hear from my colleagues that they want something other than the status quo. Am I safe in assuming that?
Yes.
Yes.
So maybe you can take that back.
Sure. Like I said, we're not opposed to, to, to moving this, the bar up. We said that in the spring when we did our report. We wanna, uh, increase the requirement. We're just not in favor of zero failures.
Okay. Very good. All right, let's move on. Mr. Ibric?
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Oh, you're still here. We're doing the next one, okay.
Okay, you, uh, you have the athletic report, do you, uh, want me to elaborate on it, or?
Well, I think I already did. I, I think the GPA is amazing, and you want to talk about GPA, there it is right there. All in the eighties.
I, I don't think it affects that many, as many students as you think with this two grad, uh, failure of two or whatever. It's only a handful of kids. And, uh, and then probably five to ten that are failing one, the rest are failing zero. So it's not like it's a huge, huge problem.
Well, I'll start it off. Uh, my question, uh, my, my problem with it is, again, um, our overall performance. It's, it's nothing to write home about.
No, it's not, and, um.
And I'm very concerned about it, and, um, and I think that, you know, we, we really, the last three or four or five of these that we've gotten, other than a couple of sports, uh, has been pretty dismal. And I think that, uh, you know, we're gonna have to have a serious conversation about where we're going with our athletic program. Because right now, I know it's not all about wins, and I know that population's shrinking, but this is pretty bad.
Yeah.
The, the conference, we're the, uh, I believe at this point, the, the third smallest school in the conference, where at one point in time, I believe we were the second largest. So there's a little fluctuation there, and, and I think that has something to do with it, but certainly, there's room for improvement, it's, it's duly noted.
Anyone, committee? Mr. Swett?
By the way, the Excel spreadsheet is great, thank you. It's exactly what, what I needed, at least. I highlighted a few things. Uh, the first, first highlight I have is, uh, kudos to the volleyball team. Wow. Eighty-nine, essentially an eighty-nine GPA. I'm sure our student representative has something to do with that. But I also highlighted three areas in football. One is there, with the exception of golf, and I can't see how you could possibly reduce expenses in, in golf, uh, because there are no officials and only one coach. They have the second highest cost per student, um, the second highest, um, cost in terms of coaches' costs per student, and they had an extraordinary expense for uniforms. So my first question is, is that uniform expense of almost nine thousand dollars? That's not an annual thing, is that, was that a one-time?
No, that's, what happens is, there's a safety issue involved there with the helmets.
Ah.
Uh, they, we, you can't get around that. You have to have, it has to be at a certain standard, and every year, that's, that's a good five thousand dollars at least, at least for that. And, uh, you know, upgrading shoulder pads, all that stuff, that, there's a safety issue in football that has to be at a certain level. And if it's not at a certain level, you can't have it, you can't play. So those, that's gonna be a cost that's hard to get around.
All, all the equipment goes out and gets tested to make sure it's up to the standard.
Oh, I don't want you to, I mean, I got problems with concussions, but the last thing I'd want you to do is sacrifice safety. If we're gonna have the sport, we have to do it well.
And that's, that's more what that bill is for.
So we're gonna see that, that's, that's a regular expense, okay. We're spending almost ten times as much on coaches, um, as, as say, use golf as an example. Is, is there no way around that?
Well, a lot of it is the numbers too, sometimes, that's, that's part of the issue too. And, um, why, our football staff is the same as, everyone in the conference has the same, same number.
Same numbers?
Yeah. So I mean, I mean, that could change, obviously, but.
Thank goodness it's spread over fifty-three kids.
Well, that's, those, that staff, our staff numbers is the same as every other staff in the conference. Matter of fact, there might be some that have more, but it's at least the same as ours.
We're gonna hold off, we have, we, we have an opening. We're gonna hold off and see what our numbers are for an assistant coach, and if the numbers don't warrant another coach... And if the numbers don't warrant another coach, there'll be a reduction there. But we're going to wait and see where we end up with signups and probably in sometime in June, make a decision on that.
And the last thing I had was user fees. When I took the total user fees and divided it by the total number of kids, I got over $100 per kid.
Yeah, which column are you looking at?
Well, we got $18,675 in user fees collected. Divide that by 183, it comes out to over $100. That just seemed, I was surprised.
Well, the user fees, every sport is different. Not every sport is different.
No. Every sport is different?
No, no. Cheerleading is different, football is different. And then the other sports are all the same. So either 150, 125, or 100.
Okay, so there, I didn't realize you had a 150 and a 125. My mistake. Okay, so 102 means you had a fair chunk of waivers, okay.
Yeah. But that increase is at least at $18,000. Last year, I believe it was around $13,000. So it's a $4,000 to $5,000 increase.
Okay, 29 eighth graders is remarkable.
Yeah, we'd like to have more than that.
Is there any sport, is there any sport that doesn't have an eighth grade waiver as it stands now?
Boys' basketball.
That's it.
Girls' tennis, right?
Well, and girls' tennis.
Does it still?
We're putting in for that this year unless you don't want to do it.
No, 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 feel free.
He's going to have some more courts.
Sooner I can get them, the better.
And even boys' basketball, they only had 10 freshmen this year? Right now, I think nine, 10?
No, please, put in for it, you know. That'd be great if we could get eighth graders. And I guarantee you, there are middle schoolers who want to play tennis.
Yeah, we're trying, you know, we think that's the key to the future in the sports here, that you continue to have the eighth graders.
Well, I was thrilled to see almost 30 kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Hugan.
Hi. One, just, you know, kudos to all the athletes, their participation, their awards and their dedication to the Wareham Athletic Program. We, they are amazing. And for them to continue, again, working on their academics with their school system, but then also participating in athletics is just remarkable. And so just kudos to them. I also saw the 29 eighth graders, which is great. And I'm glad to hear that you want that just to continue. Because I think that leads to my other question, which is around, is there an expectation with current coaches and also current students to participate in helping feeder systems like soccer? If there are any golf programs? And the reason why I ask is.
That's what we're trying. That's what I'm trying to get our coaches to do. And, you know, our soccer coaches, soccer in particular, this has been a weak sport here, boys and girls soccer. And I know, as you see, as one of the community services, a boys' coach actually helped run the five to eight, eight-year-olds. And his players went to help out. He helps, he's organized in the league of that nature. And another guy, our assistant coach was a coach there too. We're trying to get, a lot of those kids don't end up coming to Wareham High School. And that's what we're trying to get, they're going to other schools. And, you know, that's been a big factor, has been a huge factor. The athletes always used to come here. They're not always coming here anymore, they're going to different places. And that's definitely been a factor in our sports.
And so what I can say is that if there is an expectation that we do, I know that coaches are so busy and the students have a lot on their plate. But the thing is, and I'm realizing it from firsthand experience right now. So we have an unbelievable group of Wareham students that are currently playing in travel soccer right now. Talented, they are, they're winning games and they're all excited and interested in it. When there are current high school students that come, very, very rarely. But when they do come, as well as any coaches, that's giving them this pride and, you know what, that's where I want to play. And being able to have that more face. And I would say the same thing could easily happen in baseball and also in football with all those feeder systems to basically start showing that pride with the little kids there that this is the team that you want to play for.
Well, I know our baseball coaches too, they're involved with the little leagues and all that stuff and umpiring and they see the kids on a regular basis at the lower levels. Our soccer coaches have been, I know the boys one has been trying to do that. And we're trying to get all our coaches, basketball's been doing that for years. We have them come to the games, the JB, the little league, it's called the JBA. They come to our games, they can come in for free. I'm trying to build a, for us to have any type of an athletic program, it's got to come from the elementary school on up. And that's our goal with our coaches. I want them to not just coach during the season, not from like, for example, August to November, but now from December on, what are you doing? You know, besides, you've got to go to clinics, you've got to get other kids involved, you've got to get the younger kids, you've got to go watch them play, you know.
It's kind of like our own little recruitment.
Yeah, well, it's not recruiting.
Scouter system.
But, no, but wearing Wareham gear and stuff like that, inviting them to games. I've tried to get kids to come to our games. And that's what I'm trying to get our coaches to talk to, you know, people down at the lower levels to get them to come to our games.
Yeah, but even partnering with the Y system, the local golf club, things like that. Like, how are there ways that it doesn't cost the school system a lot of money, but that we're participating in existing programs that are out there that then just help, it'll help us in the long run?
That's what a coach should do anyway. And I'm trying to hire coaches that want to do that. In other words, that's got to be part of their life.
The recipe you just gave us is the recipe for building a program. We want coaches that are going to build programs. And you just pretty much outlined the recipe. You've got to get down in the trenches with the youth programs. And these coaches are lucky enough to have youth programs. There's some programs, like tennis and a few other sports, where they don't have the youth programs. So the coaches have to kind of create their own youth program. So the coaches that have a feeder system are very fortunate, but there are probably just as many programs that don't have the feeder system. So we're looking for coaches to build programs. And you just outlined the recipe.
Yeah, and just to give you a quick example of that. Pulling teeth, my husband is finally coaching his, our son's youth travel team. I'm just telling you, he's the last person that should be. Please, hopefully he doesn't hear this. He's gotten so much better though, but it's, you know, he would even say himself that he would benefit from someone, like, he looks at people to kind of pull in as assistant coaches. But it's really, we have parents that don't have the background that are teaching the kids that are looking to be part of these school systems. So being able to just help out there, so.
Yeah, we hired a young volleyball coach that's been unbelievable since he's been on as far as doing all this stuff that you're talking about. And I'm trying to get all our coaches to do the same thing.
Thank you.
He's been fantastic. And the enrollment, as far as the number of kids that want to play volleyball, it's almost doubled since last year because of him. But he has all these things in place. And, you know, matter of fact, we will be coming back here because they voted on the other day, the parents, they want to go to a tournament in Florida, in Disney World, before the season starts, which I've been involved with actually for many, many years. And many of my teams went. And that builds interest too.
I would just say, really take a look at the Y system because they are getting those kids because we don't have those youth programs and how we can partner with them. So then, again, we're not incurring the costs. So if they have existing programs, how can we partner with them? We don't incur any costs, but then we're getting the kids there. Thank you, Mr. Chair, sorry.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry, I took a bunch of time.
Anybody else from the committee? All right. Again, great report. Thank you very much for your efforts.
Just got to get some more wins.
I know. And I hope you take our comments in the spirit in which they're given.
We want to thank Sandy Barboza, who's head secretary, that helped out tremendously, obviously, with that report as well.
Nice.
And Mike, too, always, always great.
And Mike.
Everybody's always been very helpful here.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next on the agenda, overview of curriculum professional development.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Hi. I know you've all anxiously been awaiting my performance for this evening. Thank you, darling. I'd like to begin, this is my first real presentation alone in front of you this evening. And I have begun my tenure with Wareham Public Schools as of, I think my contract's at July 1st, but I started a little earlier than that.
And we appreciate it.
Well, thank you. And it's been a wonderful experience thus far. So I want to thank you all for this opportunity and thank Dr. Shaverhood for the opportunity to participate in this challenging but wondrous adventure that we're beginning on. I would like to share with you my own personal values and core beliefs. I don't do this often, but I think it's important that you know where I stand. So I'm going to read that, the beginning of that is here. The first paragraph of these, it's not terribly long, but I would like you to be aware of where I come from before I begin my presentation. So I believe that when we are all present to secure the vulnerable foundation underneath each child, the possibilities, the possible opportunities are unpredictable. As they grow, the children's inner voices are heard and the foundation becomes a powerful platform to embrace all of life's challenges. I believe that children should be at the forefront of all decisions. I believe that every child begins life curious. I believe that children come to school because they do not know. I believe that every child can learn. I believe that there are many ways they may show this. I believe that good teaching is essential to a child's desire to learn. I believe that teachers have a lot more power than they are aware. I believe that school personnel need to be careful about their judgments. I believe that hard work is a precursor to personal success. I believe that it takes many adults to help children learn. I believe that children should be at the forefront of all decisions. I believe that social and emotional intelligence are paramount to success. I believe in contributing to fostering positive, productive relationships. I believe that human beings need established relationships. I believe in laughing, working toward a common goal, empowering others, mutual respect, trust, risk-taking, discourse, honesty and collaboration. I believe that feelings matter. I believe that children should be at the forefront of all decisions. I believe in supporting and celebrating the success of others. I believe that effective leaders are authentic. I believe that building trust empowers people. I believe in digging to find truth and I believe in us. In the beginning. So rather than focusing on achievement, which we did at our MCAS presentation, we discussed that as a team. I would really like to turn our attention to growth. Because in essence, that's really what we're looking for. We're looking for our students to move from where they were to where they're going in a forward motion, or you hope that they're moving up. And we can measure that annually with their experiences year by year. And that may not show up right away in achievement. I think sometimes achievement is limiting in many respects as to what it is that we're actually doing and how we're succeeding. So I spend a lot of time thinking about growth and thinking about how do we, we have 180 days, which isn't really a long time. And we have six and a half hours within that 180 days to make a difference in the lives of students. We need to figure out where they are so that we can get them to that next place. If we're just looking only at achievement, then we're not really looking at the whole child. We're not looking at all of the intricacies that make that child who they are and then helping them through that. So when I look at growth in the Wareham Public Schools, I had some concerns overall. And this is just a district profile in English and math. And I thought, well, I have to dig it a little bit further to figure out what's causing this, where are the issues and what can we do to help our students? So the first thing I thought was important was to look at assessment. So to provide opportunities to gather significant in the moment data. Because the data sometimes that we often gather is, when teachers look at MCAS, they're looking at the past, they're not looking at the current and what they can do. They're looking at scores from the last year. And so it's hard for a teacher to look at a whole brand new set of students and be sure of what they're planning to do with the hope that it's going to make a difference. So my feeling is that we needed some system that could analyze quickly, accurately, that's also statistically significant, give us a snapshot into where our students are and what they need. So this formative assessment for teachers called FAST, we began implementing it K through six. Now, we have a series of measures that are computer adaptive for each student, so it's not the same measure for every student. But the computer becomes, the student is unique to the computer and the system. And it gauges where they are and asks them questions. And every student, grade K through six in the district, participated in this FAST assessment. As FAST is new, they just started last year and they're working through a university. And one of my colleagues from my past position was highly involved in helping them formulate the specific measures and how those measures look so that teachers could read them easily. Because there was a disconnect, when the university professors got the assessment together, they had all the data. But the way the data was distributed on the computer was not easy to access for teachers in the classroom. So she was very involved with helping them formulate a system where teachers could look up that student very quickly and determine where their strengths were, where their weaknesses were, and plan accordingly to help them. So we implemented this, it was not, it was definitely a little bit challenging, but everybody rose to the occasion, did a really wonderful job with it. I'm very grateful for all the support that I received to do that. And basically, just a little description of what FAST is. This first sentence is pretty important to me. They believe that teachers are the most important valuable resource in schools. I also believe that to be true, and there are many studies that would support that. It helps automate the assessment system so that teachers spend 50 to 90% less time assessing and more time teaching, computer adaptive. And every student is assessed three times throughout the year and it's data-driven and helps, and can also report growth. So it also will help us if we are, if we decide that this system is good for us in Wareham. For those students that do not participate in MCAS, it has the potential to become a district determined measure that's required by the state because of its significance. These are our results from early October. So basically, what we're looking at is kindergarten through grade six. We're looking at high risk for problems in reading, some risks with reading, high in math, some in math, and the total enrollment. You all had a copy of this too, I believe. So when I saw this, I got a little nervous. Right? Because it gave me some information. Now granted, you have to take into account it's a new system. Many students are not necessarily familiar with how to acclimate this and how to use it on the computer. And the teachers were new at giving the assessment. So there is some room to say that they may be better than what is indicated here or that there may not be as many risks as what is indicated here. But there are some interesting relationships that you can see. If you remember correctly, the fourth grade students did very well in MCAS last year in that presentation that we did earlier in the year. Those fourth grade students are the current fifth grade students on this list. So if you compare them to everyone else, you can see that there's some strength in that class overall, which would explain some of what's going on with that particular cohort. It's just interesting correlations that you can begin to make in the here and now that you may not have had if we didn't have access to this assessment system. So through these concerns, I was able to say, well, all right, now we're concerned. Every school K through eight has a block in their schedule specified for interventions or academic enrichment, they're calling it a number of different things. But basically, there's a block in that schedule where they have time to help students. The problem with many of them is that there are too many students that need some help, according to the data. So I had to figure out, how was I going to? So I had to figure out, how was I going to make those groups smaller without spending money? Right? Because that's the situation that we find ourselves in. Because you can't really intervene with a class of 25 students that all need help. The whole purpose of intervention is to do it in small groups and so that there are relationships built between the adult and the student, and they can dig in to help the student with those interventions and hopefully help the problem. The groups were too large. So, as a result, the interventionists were brought in for direct instruction, commensurate with the results of the assessment. So if I'm getting too detailed, just let me know, I'll cut it off, but it's really important to me, so I'm going to talk about it, obviously. So basically, what's happened is that after the data was collected, we were able to determine where the problems were specifically in reading, in comprehension, in math, the concepts of math and the application of math, that's what it measures. And then you can dig a little bit further to find out what are the actual problems? You know, is it a lack of word sight recognition? Is it not knowing the difference between a long and short vowel sound? Are there actual reading problems, or are there comprehension problems? So they're not, is there not enough exposure to vocabulary? Things like that, that the assessment gives you that much information. It's pretty incredible.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a clarifying question at this point?
Why don't you let her finish her presentation, and I'll ask a question. Maybe we could take a short recess at some point when you're ready, and then we'll ask some questions.
Sure. So with this information, the schools then started to get together and formulate groups of kids with similar profiles so that they could focus in on the needs of each of those subsequent students. We began to pilot Lexia and Symphony Math, which are two computer adaptive programs for students for reading and math, that can also measure growth, by the way, which is very interesting. And we did the pilot because I didn't want to just depend on it being the end-all-be-all. I want to make sure that what we're actually doing is going to work. So with the pilot, we have two classes involved in every school in the pilot. Those students, 20 minutes a day, one class does Lexia, one class does Symphony. We decided to have them be heterogeneously grouped, meaning different levels participating in each of those subsequent pilot programs. We had a meeting with Lexia and Symphony with the teachers that were going to be involved. We then had another meeting to assess where the data was in mid-December, and we will end the pilot on January 17th. The second round of FAST testing begins January 5th at the middle school, because now seventh and eighth grade have added onto the, to the FAST reading assessment as an addition to, because they needed more information about those two groups. FAST doesn't have anything that goes up to that grade yet for math, they're developing that currently. So we did the reading for seven, eight. They have 800 students, so we opened up the window a little bit early so that we could make sure, because it's a window of about three weeks that you have to test everyone, because you want to have students at this, pretty much the same place when you test them for the statistical significance of that. So they start January 5th. The teams are going to focus on helping the students that are involved in the pilot program be tested first through FAST so that we can measure the same combination of students using just FAST versus the students that were involved in the pilot to see if, in fact, it was successful for that group. So we started that, and then the strategies have begun. We're also, we're able to-
Is this a place to pause so we can ask some clarification questions?
Sure.
You don't mind?
I don't mind.
All right. Mrs. Vugan.
It's okay. Just going back to the data elements, I want to make sure that, so what you're able to do now with this new system is that you're able to cut up this data depending on the activity or goal that you want to achieve, meaning that if it has to do with what's going on in the classroom, since every single student in, say, the third grade is now taking this, you're able to take a look classroom, you're able to take a look at whole class, you're able to take special needs population, look at, so you can basically take a look at this data from any way that you want to and then create activities to be able to help those students.
Correct.
That's phenomenal.
I know.
To me, it feels like it's, it's like there was a cancer, and now all of a sudden you had the genetic, you know, blueprint, or, yeah, that now you're able to see everything and then be able to then get it down to, this is what's causing it, and this is what we can do.
Correct. So, because we want to really, what we're trying to do is write prescriptions. You can't write a prescription for something, you don't know where the problem is.
You want to make sure they have the right treatment.
Correct.
Okay.
Because I think a lot of us spin around for a very long time trying to figure out what exactly we can do for kids, because I don't believe there's anyone that doesn't want to do that. They want to help children, right?
Yes.
They want them to be successful, but without the proper tools to really diagnose accurately and also quickly, right? Because you don't want, you don't want students to be engaged in this kind of activity over and over again. You want to say, all right, we have a, we have a general idea. You intervene, and sometimes it's not that difficult. It could be, highlight all the words you don't understand in this passage and come back over to me, and let's talk about how to find the answers to these words, and do this over a period of a couple of weeks. All of a sudden, the student is now able to identify those words and understand their meaning. Do you see what I mean? And it just, it just gets that to, it helps them get to that next place where they may have not been able to get before.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to make sure that you're able to dissect it any way that you want to.
Any other questions from the committee at this time? Mr. Swett.
To continue the medical analogy, it's a fabulous diagnostic tool, but it doesn't treat.
The teachers treat.
Right. Do you feel you have the capacity to treat based on this great information?
Yes.
You didn't equivocate, you just simply said yes. Great. Second question. You're using the term growth. My question is, is MCAS SGP growth totally compatible with FAST calculations of growth?
Totally, probably not totally, because their way that they, it's a pretty complicated formula.
Both, well, I'm familiar with the MCAS formula.
That is a pretty complicated formula.
So you're saying FAST is a little simpler?
It's a little simpler, yes.
But you have a comfort level that it's close enough?
It's, it's the most statistically significant measure I could find to justify tallying growth.
Fair enough. Finally, do you consider the fifth-grade results an anomaly, or is it, or are they meaningful?
They're meaningful.
How are they meaningful?
The fifth-grade results on this?
Yes.
They're very meaningful because they're supported by the success of the fourth-grade in MCAS the previous year. So to me, it's just justified the fact that, okay, we-
That's, that's not what I mean.
Okay.
I'm not communicating, sorry.
No, it's all right.
That they still could be an anomaly in the sense that, did we cause those wonderful results, or did they just happen to be because we happened to aggregate accidentally a whole bunch of great students in the same grade?
I would say that there is a combination in that. So I'm not saying that there wasn't wonderful strategies that were implemented to help those students gain what they needed to gain, for sure. There has to be a combination of both, but I also know I've been in schools for a very long time, and there is, you see that there are cohorts of groups of students that move up and downs, and it's just the way that they move, so.
Those, yeah, but have you been able to isolate those wonderful strategies that contributed to, even if they weren't 100% causative, but at least contributed to those results?
Yes, and we've asked other members of the staff to implement those same strategies.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right. Let's move on. Continue.
So here we have students working on, I had pictures, so it would feel like, yeah, it's really happening, because I can tell you anything, right? But no, it's really happening. So Jamie took some pictures of kids that were engaged in Lexia and Symphony Math. Thank you, Jamie. And I wanted to share with you my SMART goals. So these were also shared with Dr. Shaverhood and approved when we did SMART goals sometime in October. And they match the pillars that we have, that the school improvement plans are built upon. I would feel, I don't think I need to read them to you, because you have them in front of you.
Yes, we do.
So I'll explain some of the things that I'm doing now, and I really didn't have enough room. I, I've really, it's very difficult to describe what I'm doing in a day, ever, so I highlighted some of the things that I think have been helpful. So attending monthly meetings with administrators, instructional leaders, and department heads has been very helpful. Meet monthly with elementary instructional leaders and Title I teachers. Had professional development in writing and math with specialists, meaning art, music, PE, health. There's been, the high school's done some college and career readiness. We've had some professional development in technology specifically around Google Docs and applications. Close Read strategies. Done some professional development on a system called LearnZillion. And we've implemented a pilot program in math called Envision Math. After every PD, I've created a survey, and I have looked at those results, analyzed them, redistributed them to all of the staff after I've analyzed them, with some commentary attached, in the hopes that any complaint, any stressors or complaints that happened as a result of the previous professional development, I will put things in place so that it doesn't happen again. This was our latest professional development on Close Read at the middle school. Everyone's doing something unique to a degree. I've also, there's also a math teacher who, through EDC, I believe it's the right acronym, and I'm sorry, I don't know what it means, because there are a lot of those acronyms, but she took a course over the summer, and basically what, she could explain it much better, but she's teaching all of the teachers math, professional development for the year, 20 hours of PD for math at the middle school. So that's been a separate program amongst the rest. So I've been involved in technology, so we attend the monthly meetings with the tech department, Michael and I go, and we're learning a lot. Looking at apps, looking at computer programming, and I'm really concerned about curriculum and its organic implementation of technology. So technology's taken people by surprise when it doesn't make sense to what they're teaching, but if the technology is integrated with the curriculum and it helps make the life of the teacher easier in that they have the technology to support the curriculum and it makes sense to use it, then I've been having a lot of conversations around the technology that we do choose, making sure that it is connected to curriculum and that it's helping teachers utilize it in a way that it's meant to be used for the purpose intended. So the, for example, Envision Math is Common Core-aligned, it's organically technologically integrated. And I've been in classes, it's pretty amazing to see the smart board hooked up to, with the math, and the kids with their Google Chromebooks and their math journals in stations, moving about with very clear understanding of what is necessary, step by step. One of the teachers piloting the program is going to put together a survey for her parents to see their feeling on it, because I think I'd like to hear that perspective. Nonetheless, it grew in, teachers started to ask about the math program, and it grew to fifth grade, and now it is going to fourth, third, second, first, and kindergarten, I think, are all going to be piloting beginning in January. Teacher, because it just happened, it just started to take off, people started to talk about it, it seemed like it was working, they didn't have to supplement the current curriculum, adding other things in. At the same time, this curriculum gives some leeway if the teacher feels as though the student needs more help in a certain area after looking at their data and the FAST data, there's room in that curriculum to supplement when necessary, but it is just automatically Common Core-aligned. It seems to be pretty exciting at the moment. And my real goal is to develop relationships. I'm new, people don't know who I am, I need to know who they are, and I think it's been a tremendous opportunity for me to meet some incredible human beings completely dedicated to helping our students in Wareham. So it's been exciting. We've, five members, including myself, are attending Analyzing Teaching for Student Results, which is a research or better teaching program. That's been a great experience. We're all evaluators, and there, four of them are new evaluators in the system, so it's been nice to be part of that. I took the class in 2004. It was called Observing and Analyzing Teaching at the time, and I felt with the new evaluation system and being part of a new district that it would be important for me to go again, so we've all joined in to do that. I've spent significant time in every school, I've partnered up with an evaluator and just gone with them to the different classrooms to see what's going on, and I was proposed to by a first grader. He was very cute. And there's just been a lot of really, it's been really nice to be part of each individual community within the community as a whole. I've offered professional development for art, music, PE, health, STEAM, technology. I've met to address them during the half-days, which is a little challenging, because I'm teaching at the same time I'm supposed to be monitoring, but it is what it is. They've appreciated it a great deal, because often the professional development offer doesn't really reach, doesn't meet what they're doing in their disciplines, and they have to start looking at district-determined measures as well, it's part of the initiative. Looking at the current structures of who's evaluating whom and how that looks and what we can do instead to help foster the alignment of curriculum across all schools. So we're having discussions on that. And the last paragraph of my core vision, my personal vision and core beliefs is, "It would not be possible to be in the position I am currently without deep reflection, a lot of hard work, and the people that believed in me even when I did not believe in myself." "My previous experiences, however judged, have given me a solid foundation to embrace servicing others. The depth of knowing and the drive toward a mission of service has been a gift. Left to my own devices without this compelling desire to make a difference, I would not be who I am today. The children are a gift to me, and my service to them allows me to always live in a place of gratitude." So with that, I'm open to any questions you have.
Thank you very much, Dr. Any more questions from the committee? Mrs. Vugan.
So I just want to let you know that this is the first presentation where somebody has presented SMART goals where I haven't asked for more data around measurement. There's not enough measurement data, and you, you're not telling me how far you're going to move the needle, or what, you know, where are the data points? I just want to say, your SMART goals have a very clear plan on how you, along with your colleagues and the Wareham Public School system, is going to move the needle when it comes to student achievement. So I just, I wanted to start off by saying that, that incredible way that you've- So I just, I wanted to start off by saying that, that incredible way that you've kind of outlined what your plan is for this year, and also moving forward, as well as saying, "All right, guys, just so you know, don't beat me up, this is going to take a couple of years." So, you know, that was great, setting the right expectation, so I just say, want to say kudos to that.
Well, thank you.
And the second thing is, when you first began, you, when you were talking about your goals, you said twice, children are at the forefront of decision-making. I hope that was actually purposeful.
It was three, it was three times.
It was three times?
And it was purposeful.
Good, I'm glad. I just wanted to make sure that everybody else understood, because it was, that was great.
You're suggesting we weren't listening?
Yeah, pretty much. She said it three times, I only heard twice, so I can say that at one point I didn't hear that one.
Mr. Chair, could you corral that woman?
I just wanted to ask, we hear about, so we had a presentation from the STEAM Academy, and we also heard a little bit around what happened last year around flipping the classroom. Can you talk to me about how you're instructing our current teachers and administration about, do we take chances on different kind of learning styles, like flipping the classroom? How do you feel about taking kind of some, you know, left turn, left turns in the way traditional education is doing, and doing things a little bit different, if it, if it seems like that would actually help out that classroom? And just the example that I'm using is flipping.
I'm pretty, I would say that I'm way out of the box. So what I, what I have to do, what I think is effective in a leadership role, is to learn where people are, so that I can safely take them to that next place. Because they're the majority, I'm the minority, and I need a lot of people to be empowered to move in a direction in order for everyone to change. So sharing, I'll share some of my ideas, and I definitely have strong convictions around public schools in general, and how they operate. And I really believe we have a long way to go, truly. But I hope that I am providing the kind of opportunity for people to feel comfortable enough to talk about what they would like to do, and then create those supports, so that they can do it. But it's still a lot for me to learn.
Okay.
But I am, I would argue, yeah, out of the box.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from the committee? Jeff?
It's an interesting philosophy. So something like flipping, looping, all those kinds of things, what I think I'm hearing you say is, for the right person with the right support, may be good for children.
Correct.
But those two caveats are critically important.
Very, right, because if you say, "We're going to flip classrooms for everyone."
Right.
It's, it really isn't, and then you're pushing something that could be wonderful, but you'd ruin the opportunity by doing it that way. Whereas if you introduce something as a way, as a possible one way in which you can help students, someone gets wind of that, and they're excited about that, it grows, because it's the right thing, automatically. And you can't do, I think also, whatever strategies you use, it has to fit the message. So flipping isn't always going to be the answer for every lesson. It's going, or blended isn't going to be the answer for every lesson, or having kids sit in rows. Sometimes it's necessary, depending upon the message that you're trying to come across. So there are a plethora of ways that you can reach students, it's just a matter of choosing the right way that's going to get the best, the strongest message across to that student.
As exciting as that sounds, what I'll call a dynamism, it also sounds risky, in the wrong hands. Do you, do you see, yes, there's high reward, but do you associate risk with that philosophy?
I'm not sure. Can you repeat the question?
Some things will work with certain people.
And certain kids, yes.
And, yeah, there's another, and that's my point. Some things will work with some people and some students. So you've got three variables, and yet you're open to it, and I appreciate that, but you're creating a fragility, maybe that's the wrong word, but I'll think of a better one maybe, you're creating a fragility because you've got multiple variables, and therefore, risk. I'm not discouraging, but I'm just wanting to see if you acknowledge that there's a certain risk of being, and high reward as well, of being out of the box.
Absolutely. I wouldn't be here if I didn't believe that.
Second question, totally different. Talk to me about your philosophy about professional development. Specifically, and I admit, I come from the medical world, where continuing education is a legal requirement, and to say it's, it's not valued, and it's not done well, is an understatement. I'm not suggesting that's true, but I'd like your opinion in education, which is, do we have the right quality and the right quantity of professional development? In other words, are we spending our money wisely in this area? I'm not suggesting we should spend less, I'm just suggesting, asking whether we're spending it well.
Well, first, you'd have to have money to spend it, which is kind of, you know, where you are. So you make do with what you have, but I have a vision of where I would like to see professional development go.
Could you give us an executive-
Do you want me to talk about the vision?
No, I'd like you, for the, because I know the chair's thinking, make it an executive summary, so could you make it an executive summary of your vision?
I would love to offer five or more graduate classes for teachers to choose from, that they could take from September to January, and meet on the half-days as cohort groups, together, and have that kind of rigor, with choice, so that they could decide what they wanted to focus their attention on. That's education-related, obviously, and I'd love to offer that across the board, so that's continuous, so it's not just this one-shot, half-day deal, that there's a reason why you're meeting on the half-day, everyone's focused in that group, they've chosen to be there, and there's a product that comes out of that as a result.
So we should expect to see that on your SMART goals next year?
Well, it might not be in my SMART goal, but it might happen.
Okay.
Because there's a lot that's writ, that's not written.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. I think that we're going to let Dr. Shum go, and we want to thank you for your efforts. It was very enlightening, and it gave the opportunity for the committee to meet you and to appreciate you.
Well, thank you.
And thank you for being here, and I'm just sorry that we went so late for you.
Save the best for last.
I know. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just one quick statement regarding FAST, please.
Well, quick.
Okay.
We emphasize quick.
So it's, it's a note to parents and caregivers regarding FAST. I had the opportunity this year to, before my son, when I sat down with his teacher, to have the FAST data at that parent-teacher conference, and what it did was, it created, it created a dialogue between the parent and the teacher regarding specific areas where my son is struggling. So down to the point of, you know, noticing, whether it's math or English, it was so specific that we commented at home, we brought it home and actually dug into it, that we could actually work on these things with him at home, because it told us exactly where he was struggling in a point. And if I had a question about it, now I can be specific back to my son's teacher, saying, "How, how can I work on this with at home, that I know that Ms. Luterno would love for us to do?" So that, we get tons of paper at home, so I think that it's important just to say, that paper that came home for K through six, and seven and eight, dissect it as a family, really dive into it, and use it as a blueprint on how you can help your child achieve in our school system.
Very good, that was a good point.
It'll be very, it'll be very telling, the next set of results, getting to February, right? We'll be able to see what's happened since, we hope.
Just how good a parent you've been.
Thank you very much, Dr.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, Mr. Swett, Policy Review Committee.
Yes, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. And you'll be very happy with this, it's going to be brief. Budget meeting tomorrow in room 228, we begin at 8:00, and we end approximately 3:30. I would like to direct people's attention to our 12 stories of success, they are on our website, Facebook page, and we've tweeted them out, so please read these fabulous stories. Last day of school for students, December 19th, and we will resume on January 5th. And finally, winter sports have begun, please support our winter sports. That's it.
Mr. Flaherty?
Just, you mentioned room 228 tomorrow, but that's in the multi-service center, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, not in this building.
Right.
It's usually in this building, that's why I pointed out, yeah.
228.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Mr. Swett, Policy Review Committee.
Policy Review-
Could you just review the policies in terms of, and specifically, I-
You wouldn't like me to expedite this process?
Just outline the changes.
Yes. Superintendent's evaluation, districting areas, approval of handbooks, succession authority, purchasing, and payment procedures, there were no changes recommended by the Policy Review Committee. So we can take those one at a time, or we can take them on, as a group, I'll leave that up to the chair.
I think we can do a consent to judge, if you say them again, and we'll make a motion to that effect.
I, I would make a motion that we approve the superintendent's evaluation, the districting areas, the approval of handbooks, the succession authority of authority, purchasing and payment procedure policies as one motion. I make a motion that we approve those.
Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion on any one of those policies? Seeing none, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, 500. Continue, Mr. Swett.
The background checks.
Yep.
We changed that to reflect a change in the law. So you will note that down under adverse decisions based on criminal history record information, there has been a section inserted, which starts, "If a school employee receives criminal information from the state or national fingerprinting-based background checks," I won't read the whole thing, but that paragraph, which goes until the, a new section called Secondary Dissemination of Criminal History Record Information starts, is all new, and it's been inserted based on Mass. General Law. And then a section which starts near the bottom, which reads at the beginning, "The superintendent shall amend employment applications to include questions concerning criminal records." That has been deleted, also to be consistent with Mass. General Law. Other than that, there are no changes, other than the fact that there are now a couple of links under legal references with respect to FBI Criminal Justice Information Services, Procedure for Correcting a Criminal Record, and Frequently Asked Questions Regarding Background Checks." The committee, Policy Review Committee unanimously recommends approval of these changes.
Do I have a motion? As corrected, as reviewed and corrected, reviewed and amended? Do I have a motion? I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
For discussion?
Question?
The question that I had with this is, I'm fine with the policy and the work that's been done on it. I think that the last time we discussed query and background checks, for me, it has more to do with the procedure that goes along with making sure this policy is followed, as well as going even one step further. So the question that I have, either to the chair or to the superintendent, is can we get some sort of presentation or that procedure in writing that talks about things like, how often query information is shared, meaning, yes, you know, that, that the person is clear, or yes, this person has been queried, and when it's going to, you know, and how it's communicated, when that's going to expire? Again, I'm, I want the procedures of how this trickles down to the buildings, where most people are, are working. So the procedure around how query information is shared with the buildings, and when somebody's query is going to expire, as well as what buildings are doing to ensure that building staff and volunteers that are working in there, that they are queried, and, you know, on a, on a regular basis. So when people are coming into the building, what is the procedure that we, that we go by saying, yes, that person has been queried, and they're allowed in our building or not? So there, there's the policy, but somehow, I'd like to be able to understand what the procedures are to making sure that this is shared, and that it's being followed.
I absolutely agree, and the perfect place to put that is in the district handbook. That's the perfect place for us. Not, not in the policy, but in a district handbook, and what the procedures are.
I agree with you. It's more just, can, can the school committee get what the procedures are?
It should be, we approved the handbook, it should be in the district handbook.
Okay. I don't think it goes that far, but I'll review it, and then I'll come back and either talk to the superintendent or bring it back here, if there'll be recommendations that I would make to it. Because I don't think that there's an understanding in each one of the buildings, this is just my own personal bet-
I agree with you.
That what the expectations are, is in each one of the buildings, when it comes to making sure, everybody in their building, parents, volunteers, whoever that's coming in to volunteer, that they're, that they're checking to make sure they're expired, so.
So, so if I understand you correctly-
It has nothing to do with policies, procedure.
I understand, but I want to make sure I'm, I'm understanding what I think is a very valid point, which is to say, someone comes to the door, they're allowed in, and they're announced they're about to either work in the building or volunteer in the building. So we have the access restriction, but at that point, as soon as they announce they're going to do one or the other, something has to happen to verify that they have been queried, fingerprinted, et cetera, et cetera. That's what you-
Right, and the majority of volunteers that come in are probably known, and they're already on their radar, but, but no, 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 but that there is a checks and balances, not every single time, but that there's a checks and balances.
Well, they have to, the first time is the key.
Yes.
And after that, they can, it's easy, okay. The next policy-
Wait a minute, we didn't vote, we didn't vote on this.
We didn't vote on it, sorry.
All right. I'd like a motion for background checks as amended by the Policy Review Committee.
You already have that in a second, so it's now just calling for the vote.
Oh, I did?
Yeah, because I said second, and then I said for discussion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, 500. Continue.
The next policy is the motor vehicle idling on school grounds policy. The following language was inserted underneath the first paragraph. "The Wareham School District shall erect and maintain, in a conspicuous location on school grounds, no idling signage, as described below. All such signage shall contain appropriate-sized fonts, so as to be visible from a distance of 50 feet." This policy, this addition is recommended by Mass., and the sign would say, "No idling, penalties of $100 for first offense, and $500 for second and subsequent offenses," and cite Mass. General Law in support of that. So that's a policy, but it also obviously needs to be implemented if it's passed.
Correct. I'll entertain a motion on the motor vehicle idling policy as amended by the Policy Review Committee.
So moved.
I have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All right, seeing none, hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, 500. Continue.
And I have saved the best for last. Thanks to the very effective collaboration between our associations and the superintendent, we actually have a staff social networking policy. And I hope you've all read it, because it's, it's, it's an interesting policy. I have obviously read it, and, and we discussed it at length, but, and we, we modified it to some extent, but this is a new policy, that's the important thing to understand, so there, don't worry about the amendments. It is what it is in front of you, and I'm hoping you can support it.
It is what it is in front of you, and I'm hoping you can support it.
Uh, my recommendation is to support it as presented, and then to see how it works, and if we have to make any amendments, do it in the future. So I'll entertain a motion to accept the social network for staff as presented.
So moved.
I have a motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
I have a second. Any further discussion? Mr. Flaherty?
Could you describe the intent, or not even the intent, but, but, letter G?
Well, could you tell me exactly where you're looking?
Oh, that's the social networking for staff.
Friending district students?
No, 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 but what, I have that in front of me. Where, what part of it?
It's letter G, if you-
Oh, I didn't hear you say G, sorry.
Yeah, uniform.
Letter G.
It starts off, uh-
Friending district students?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
Is that not allowed?
Well, if you have a personal, my interpretation is, if you have a personal website.
This is all about, this is only about personal websites, right?
Well, it refers to, there is this distinction between a professional website and a, and a personal website. But if you have a personal website, we don't expect you to be friending students. Um, I'm simplifying the, but that's the spirit of this.
But if you have an academic Facebook page, that is inappropriate.
Yes.
It is an appropriate thing to friend students, so then they are able to see what is going on on, on the academic. I'm just using Facebook as a-
No, me too.
Apparently, Facebook is passe, but, but that's the concept.
No, I mean, I'm just, I just, I know teachers that I'm friends with, and, and, you know, my, my wife's friends with, and I'm sure, and, and, you know, my, my child plays with their child, and-
That's different.
But not if they, they decide to friend the teacher, right, or vice versa, or-
Where, where, this is, as it relates to students, not parents. A parent could be a friend of a teacher.
Right, but if, if my child has a Facebook page and wants to friend the teacher, I wouldn't want-
Not appropriate.
Chairman?
Yes, I'm sorry. I'm not the chair.
Yes. I will tell you that we have had bad experiences in the past. In this district, where teachers have befriended students through electronic situations, there is absolutely, in my estimation, no reason, none, zero, that a teacher, a professional, should be dealing with a student in a non-professional way through personal-
Social media.
Media. We have email, we have teachers who have professional media pages.
All right, let me back-
So I have no problem with saying they can't do it.
Let me back up. Are you saying, like, if this student happens, if the, if the student is the, I'm talking about teachers in general, not necessarily that this teacher is his teacher. She's just a teacher in the system.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So it's, if a, if a, for me, if a teacher wants to communicate via social media to a student, or even just show what's, you know, teachable moment, whatever it is, a personal, they're, a personal, I'm just gonna continue on the Facebook group. A personal Facebook page has the ability to post all kinds of personal things about that teacher. There, there is no reason why a student should have that interaction with a teacher in the school system.
But if the, if they're friends outside of school, if they go to things together, all, I, I don't, I don't know how that would pass muster with civil liberties, honestly, but, anyway. That, just that one section really bugs me, but-
There's gotta be, as Jefferson said concerning church and state, a brick wall between those things. There must be a brick wall between the teacher's personal life and the student's personal life when it comes to social media. They cannot, you cannot break down this wall. Every time that wall is broken down, and we've seen it in this district and another districts, there have been issues. The teacher is interested, again, I know it's passe, using Facebook, set up a professional Facebook page, but you cannot use your personal Facebook page to communicate with students.
Mr. Chair, I think we're-
Do we have a motion, not, on a second?
Yes.
Do we have a motion?
Yes, and we have a second.
Do we have a second?
Yep.
All right. I'm, I'm gonna allow one more question, then we're gonna vote. Mr. Flaherty?
Just has the union weighed in on it? This particular one?
Yes.
What did they say?
The union representatives were there, and they are in, uh, in agreement with this version.
Okay, all right. That's all I need to know.
All right, let's, let's wrap it up. Um, let's have a vote. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 5-0-0. Mr. Swett?
That's it. Mr. Chair?
Thank you very much for your efforts. We've got a couple of minutes left. Um, I had talked to Jeff. Jeff wanted me to put this on tonight's agenda, and as you can see, we've had a pretty long agenda this evening. However, I do want, under new business, because I think it, I, I think we have to at least talk about it just a little bit, maybe for about three or four minutes today, in terms of a carryover from last meeting, because Jeff was gonna have a conversation with the superintendent about her goals. He did email me, uh, and he has had this conversation, and I would like to have him just review for the committee, um, I don't know if we'll be voting on it tonight, but at least review for the committee, uh, what he and the superintendent have come up with. And I'd like to have the superintendent, if she has any, anything to add to it. So Jeff, why don't you start?
So-
And I'm doing this under any other business, only because it was left undone last week, last time.
I passed out three pages. One is the top page that you're all familiar with. You'll notice under total evaluation score breakdown, the superintendent and I have agreed that instead of it being 60 goals and objectives, 40 general responsibilities for a total of 100 points, it would now be 40 goals and objectives, 20 impact on student learning, and 20 general responsibilities. I wanna make it very clear, this does not change what we agreed to the other, at this past meeting, in terms of the weighting. It just simply means that the weighting would apply to a smaller number. So the goals are they, the weighting on those goals will, will stay the same, but when you multiply the weighting, it will be against 40 instead of 60.
Well, okay, that, that raises my first point, that I just figured out today. I was, I would've called you earlier.
I anticipate your question, but go ahead.
Well, I hope you, I hope you're doing, I hope, because we didn't have a percentage.
Right.
We, we put specific points that added up to 60.
Correct. So what I did was I calculated that 16, 16, 16, 12-
Yep.
Is the equivalent of, don't cringe, 10 and 2 thirds, 10 and 2 thirds, 10 and 2 thirds, and 8.
All right.
Okay?
Of the 20, or of the 40?
Of the 40.
Of the 40?
Of the 40.
All right, gotcha.
Okay.
Okay, so my second point is, how do you quantify the 20?
The 20 is up to the, each individual committee member to decide.
Okay.
Obviously, it's worth up to 20 points.
Okay.
Okay? Um, and then the 40 is still the same number that we always had. Uh, we haven't changed that. You'll notice the second page is simply the performance goals of, for the superintendent. This is the form that was intended by the state for us to use. Don't have to use it, but they would like us to use it. And then the third page, um, you'll see under step four, it's, it's literally shaded. And that's because the state hasn't mandated the use of student learning impact to be part of the superintendent's evaluation yet, but they will be. So by doing this, we're simply getting ahead of the game, and I think we all feel that impact on student learning is a huge part of a superintendent's responsibilities. So I, I, um, thank the superintendent for working with me to, to, to make this happen, and we are both urging your approval. Whether we vote tonight is up to the chair.
Well, I mean, I, I mean, we can have a discussion, but I think, you know, we, it's five, I got five minutes of, of 10. Um, and if the committee wants to vote on it, they can vote on it, but I, I just hate to rush something through on this, and I understand the intent. The only reason I brought it up tonight is, uh, if the committee had any specific questions, like I did. Okay, so, let, let, does anyone have any questions on this? Let, let's start with the questions.
Wow, that's good.
I may, but this is the first time I've seen it. Okay. Um, yeah, 'cause you weren't here last time.
No.
All right. Does everyone understand the intent and the spirit of this? Okay, would, would, just out of respect for Mr. Lazarus, would folks be opposed, would the superintendent be opposed to delaying the vote until the next meeting? I don't think it's gonna change. I don't, I don't sense that anybody's got anything controversial here. Uh, my, my only thing was-
If you wanna take a vote now, it's fine with me.
Well, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I mean, I, I don't, I think it's gonna go through. So I, my main concern for bringing it up is, we've kind of delayed this thing. And I think it's, I think it's only fair to the superintendent that she start to work on whatever it is we're gonna evaluate her on.
I think she's been working on student achievement.
Yeah, I know, but, um, so I don't, I don't think a formal vote tonight would change anything, but I, I sense that this is probably not gonna change. Mr. Flaherty?
It is not on the agenda, right?
No, it's not.
I think we just wait.
Yeah, and the only, like I said, the only reason I brought it up tonight is I wanted to have anybody an opportunity to do it.
Yeah.
But I, I don't think we, we have a problem. I don't see it changing, and, and put it on the agenda for a vote at the next meeting. Is that satisfactory to everybody?
No.
Very good. Very good. And if you have any questions in the meantime, you know, don't ask me. Uh, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
We are adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.